Get seated and thank all of you for being here today. Today is July sixteen, two thousand and twenty-four. Our thoughtful today is, "I can't change the direction of the wind, but I can adjust myself to always reach my destination." That's by Jimmy Dean. We'll go ahead and officially call this meeting to order tonight. I'm going to ask Commissioner Edwards if he would lead us in our invocation and our pledge tonight, please.
If you, all by your heads, please. Dear Lord, Heavenly Father, thank you for another chance to come together and do the business of this county. County we love, Lord, we ask that you guide us, give us wisdom and discernment. We ask all these things in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, let's take a motion that we adopt the agenda, please.
So moved.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passed. It passes three oh. Next is citizen comments. Just when we let a citizen make comments about agenda topics only. Agenda topics only, have three minutes to do so. You can come and decide, please state your name and your address for the record, please. Agenda topics only.
Find my notes right here real quick. Name is Dave Norton, newborn, Georgia. In the standards of review of the Newton County zoning ordinance and the Newton County Development Regulations, both state the purpose of the boards is to protect and promote the public health, morals, safety, and general welfare of the county. Division six hundred, six two zero, zero, six, zero of the Newton County zoning, zoning ordinance states the board is to review the population density, patterns, and possible increase or overtaxing of the load on public facilities, including but not limited to schools, utilities, streets. Notice that a guarantee of profit is not mentioned in these statements. Your obligation is to a majority of the citizens of this county, not just to select few good old boys. In the zoning procedures, when an application comes up for review, the chairman shall ask for a show of hands for those persons who appear in support of or opposition to the petition. If it appears that the number of persons wishing to appear in support of opposition to the petitions is in excess of that which may reasonably be heard, the chairman may request that a spokesperson for the group be chosen so that the entire presentation of the positions of those in support of or opposition to the position shall not exceed thirty minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you. Um, next on the agenda is the chairman's report. I don't have anything to report tonight. Uh, Mr. County Manager, you have anything tonight?
I sure do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, thank the board members, and thank the citizens of Newton County. I come before you today with the county manager's report. Our three P approach, people, purpose, and processes, we will focus on people and we're going to focus on staff. Unsung heroes. As you all know, this past March, we had the State of the County and we unveiled unsung hero awards for those, uh, individuals who really are focused on the goal and not so much their role because they are thoroughly immersed in the work that they do. And here's just a snapshot of the people that were recognized as a part of the unsung award recipients. As a result of that and keep the momentum going as to, uh, identifying outstanding staff, we and in particular, our Public Information Office will highlight our unsung heroes throughout the course of FY two thousand and twenty-five with a small video segment. Uh, we have produced those segments on all of our platforms and released our first one on July tenth. Too often in government, we look at the end result and the shiny, successful results. But one needs to ask themselves, how have we reached those results? Who made those results happen? Well, it is many in a diverse workforce who work diligently, vigilantly, and determined to succeed tasks on a daily basis. These are the individuals of our Newton County workforce who we call unsung heroes. While we can't honor all seven hundred and twenty-four employees, again, I want to reiterate that they are thoroughly immersed in providing a service to our most invaluable resource in this community, you, the people. Each department is unique in its own right and provide a service with a smile on their face and an undying commitment to succeed. Today, I want to honor a resident of Newton County, Ariel Arrendondo, who was a part of our Solid Waste Department. He had recently received the Work of the Year for Landfill Operations by the Solid Waste Authority Chapter and was featured during our State of the County address and was one of the award recipients. And again, we have a video of Ariando that's out on all platforms now as well. Also, this is Parks and Recreation Month in July, and I want to highlight our thirty outstanding staff, but it'd be remiss of me not to identify the leaders within that workforce. Those leaders are here tonight, the director, Mr. Dwayne Mask, and deputy director, Kell Curtis. Can you both stand? Thank you. Again, another boutique outfit that does big and bold things in this community to serve all citizens. They manage twelve distinct parks and facilities across Newton County, and they try to make it an experience for our hundred and twenty thousand citizens that make up Newton County. And right now, they're in the midst of getting football season going and be on the lookout in October for a major event, the Miracle League All-Stars. Here, we take kids of all walks of life with disabilities and afford them the opportunity to participate in America's pastime, baseball. Here's just a snapshot of the Parks and Rec team in action, and again, we want to thank them as we honor them during Parks and Recreation Month. This concludes my county manager's report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next on the agenda is, um, consent agenda. I seek a motion that we approve it, please.
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes four oh. We're going to ask Ms. Apple, I mean, Ms. Brittany White, if she would come on down. Item number nine.
Thank you. I'd like to do two different votes on these because one budget amendment is FY twenty-four and one is FY twenty-five. So is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. So the first budget amendment is going to be a year-end budget amendment for FY twenty-four. We have a project in our two thousand and eleven SPOLOST that is in need of additional funding, that's the Historic Jail project. So they will need an additional three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So this budget amendment is going to transfer over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the two thousand and eleven SPOLOST, and we are going to be taking tho- those funds from interest income. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Brittany. Uh, let me get a motion on the floor. Can I get a, let me get a motion on the floor first. Guys, let's, let's do this before we get going. Uh, so this is a, a business meeting. We're going to take this time out to ask you to, um, put your phones on vibrate or silence, please. Put your phones on vibrate or silence. If you will, please take a moment to do that. We want to make sure the deputies enforce that tonight. So let's get a motion on the floor so we can get into discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motioned by Commissioner, um, Edwards and second by Commissioner, um, Mason. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Uh, uh, this is, and this is addressed to the county manager, is that originally the, you're talking about the historic jail, correct?
Yes, uh-huh.
Originally, it was going to be some kind of museum or whatsoever. Then it was going to be, um, something for the, uh, some kids to come up, and so I guess wh- wh- we're renovating it for it to be used as what? Because there's been no clear discussion as to what it'd be used to, used for once it's been renovated.
Well, it's going to be used, uh, in a two-pronged approach. We're going to have our four H, uh, department over there using it, and then also, we're going to highlight the accomplishments of the Newton Six, sir.
Well, I just want to say, and it's good, highlighting Newton Six, but it also, it represent a little bit more, it was more people who marched at that particular time in, in era, and the jail was, because I was, uh, I had a, I had a lesson at the time. The jail was used to lock up a lot of people, and it was more than just, uh, six people, a lot of people, and it, it should be more of a historic museum type, uh, in my opinion, where it should be displayed up to the commu- community. And I had hoped that, you know, as far as our four H, could we find another place for them and that there'd be a, a, a historic landmark similar to the ones that we have within this county, well, we don't have any too many, but one of them, TK Allen Building in this county, to other counties. So that it, it can be a destination to go back and reflect on the time when the, um, young men and women of color who marched from Harrah Cullen School and they were locked up because they wanted to make a change. And the change came about and, and the change is that, that's the reason why, uh, people of color sent around this horseshoe. And so, let's not water it down, just make it what it is and remember them, and, and let's move kind of forward, just, just let us not move backwards. What I mean by that, they know where we're going, they know where we came from and what we done and make it better. And I think they need to be remembered as a whole. Now, on the Newton Six and that little, uh, some kind of thing y'all put out there in the yard that represents what some people done, it should be displayed throughout the entire building, you know, so that people can remember. Because it's my understanding from the time that, um, I went inside and visited, from the people who talked, that one of the last places, that a person who was going to be hung in that building, they would take a look over to this court, over this courthouse in that back room right back there, and that would be the last place that they, they would see. And people would come and stand in that back room right back there and look at them, I guess, the lights went off or whatever, or came back on after they was, after they had been hung. And so, I think it should be a place that we all should remember, it's in history. It's, it's, it should be a historic monument, it should represent the peoples who were jailed unfairly in years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Chairman. I made a point to talk to the county extension agent, Ashley Best, is that her name?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, she, she's looking forward to moving over there and setting up her operation over there, but she also had a idea of a history area in there for the, uh, history of the county. Uh, we talked about several things, she's got a lot of good ideas, and, um, that's a historic building out there regardless of what it was used for, um, and unfortunately, but there, there, it is still a historic building, and it's a unique design, uh, over there. I'm not sure about anybody actually hung over there. There may have been, I don't know. I could probably research it and find out, but, um, um, I think it, it would be remiss on the county not to expend money to get that building up to a high level for the public to use, and, um, Ms. Best has a lot of ideas in terms of, of, uh, farming, history of farming in Newton County. A lot of people don't know it, but at one time, there was thirty-seven dairies, dairy farms here at one time. But anyway, um, she's, uh, she's got a lot of good ideas for that, and I think it's going to be a good use. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Well, first of all, I forget, when I, when I first got, forgive me, please, for coming a little late. I was just running, doing some stuff at home, and I got a little late, but I want to just, uh, chime in with my good friend, um, Commissioner Cowan, that said, that building was a sheriff's office, and in the sheriff's office at that particular time, you jailed peoples up in it for doing wrong. Where all those young men who was then teenagers who were jailed in it, they were just marching because they wanted to integrate our schools. They wanted to be, go to the same school that everybody went to. Uh, they were tired of all the books that had the pages torn out of them, and they wanted a change. And I'm not seeing what, um, what you said, the young lady been running, Ms., what's her name?
Ashley, Ashley Best.
Ms. Ashley Best is thinking wrong, but what I'm seeing is, he should be looked at, at his historic value to this community. Those people suffering in jails, Ms. Kathleen Williams, um, she showed me where they couldn't stand up straight in it. They showed the holding pen that, you know, if we put a dog in a holding pen today like that, the corner folk will come and pick you up and put you in jail. So what I'm saying is, I think it should be a conversation with the, um, historic Afro-American historic community and how they should dress up, uh, at least most, if not all, of that building in remembrance of where we came from as a community. Now, I'm going to say this in close. When I first came in this historic courthouse, there was a lot of pictures of, of, uh, the cotton mills, you know, and the peoples on the wagons, and I guess they were celebrating because of, they had a, I guess they had picked a lot of cotton at that particular time. But I noticed on the wagons was the people of color who had, who, who had, um, I guess, drove the muse to the cotton mill or in process of going to the cotton mills. But times have changed, and we should, we shouldn't be behind in Newton County as behind as we, as we are now. It should be, it's a melting point, a lot of people who come here, a lot of more people come here. Look at the building. People built, there's so much building, that if you would try to say you wanted to stop building, then you'd probably get knocked down because people looking for homes where they can live. And, and, you know, so let us not forget how we got here. Let's work together as a community, the way we should work, with the people of color who were jailed in there, and I think, but it, the numbers should be about, uh, ninety-eight percent of people that were jailed in the jail over there were people of color. So, uh, I think if anything, there should be a conversation between the young lady and the Afro-American Historical Society to try to get it right, working together. You know, we know about farms, because I liked to head to pick cotton when I was a little boy. Luckily for me, my grandmother let me do it. And so, but we also want to work together and make something a little special in this community for the jail. The original idea of a jail, and I, you know, wanted to be, wanted to be renovated too as well, and, and our boys agreed with me, and that was, they wanted a museum. They had to be a museum to, if I may finish, please, there, there was to be a musei- museum, uh, historic museum, which I said, you don't want a museum with, uh, with people who, uh, were really treated badly. So, uh, I think if we work together, we can, working together, we can make that really something special, as Commissioner Cowan has said. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed?
Extension, because I just saw somebody go.
All right. It passes four one, one extension. Brittany.
Thank you. The second budget amendment is going to be an FY twenty-five budget amendment. So when we were going through the budget process of FY twenty-five, we did accidentally leave off the hundred thousand dollars for the, um, mental health position over in the Sheriff's Department. So this budget amendment is just to put a hundred thousand dollars in their contracted service line, and we are going to take that from our reserve for fiscal year, um, changes, which is our contingency. Um, so we're going to be increasing the contracted service line in the Sheriff's Department by a hundred thousand and decreasing the reserve for fiscal year changes by a hundred thousand. Are there any questions on that one?
Thank you. I seek a motion, please.
So moved.
Can I? It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Thank you. I thought they, uh, were supposed to cover the auto funding?
I'm sorry?
When that mental health funding, the auto funding for that?
No, sir.
Okay. Yeah, fine, okay.
All in favor? I'm sorry, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So Brittany, refresh my memory, we, we, this discussion and vote was a couple of months back, right? I, I, I just couldn't remember exactly when, but I seem to remember the discussion and the vote, it was a couple of months back, wasn't it?
Correct. We did, um, twenty-five thousand dollars in the FY twenty-four budget, and then we just forgot to put this hundred, full hundred thousand in the FY twenty-five budget.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you. Guys, we're going to go into recess. We're going to go into recess for about seven minutes, if you don't mind. I'm going to move, then we move into a recess for about seven minutes. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Guys, we're gonna move back into our board meeting tonight. It's almost time for zoning. Ms. Appleweight, if you would, please come on up. Ladies and gentlemen, we want to remind you that this is a live board meeting. Clapping and applauding is not permitted tonight. Please give respect to the person that's up here speaking tonight, whether you support them or you don't support them. Please give them respect for being up here. So clapping, applauding is not permitted tonight. The deputies are here tonight to enforce that. We want to make sure everybody stays in here. We don't want anyone to be escorted out. So please, ma'am, please, sir, adhere to that. Please put your phones on silence tonight as well. It is seven thirty. Ms. Appleweight, if you would, please come on up.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. I'll try to speak a little louder. Our first petition today is a rezoning case number REZ.
Hold on one second. Let's make sure we get a good understanding tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a business meeting tonight. Speaking out would not be, you can't do it. So if you got comments, please keep them to yourself or come up during comments time and make your comments. But speaking out in the board meeting would not be tolerated tonight. Again, the deputies are here tonight and they will, they will enforce that tonight. So please, ma'am, please, sir, please adhere to that. Ms. Appleweight?
Thank you. Our first case number is REZ twenty-four dash zero 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 two. It is located at Highway two seventy-eight and Highway one forty-two on approximately a hundred and fifty-eight acres. Tax ID is zero zero nine nine dash zero zero nine. The existing land use map is rural residential. The existing zoning is agricultural residential. The proposed zoning is to a cord PRC, which is a community-oriented residential development, planned residential commercial. This development is located in the Alcovi River watershed in District Five. Current owner is Sockwell Corners LLC. The petitioner is Ed Hutter, and the representative today is Kyler Wise. This is a change from what was submitted in your packet a week ago. We were asked to make this change today. And again, applicant's intent is to rezone the above parcels from AR to a cord. And we just have the brief history outlined, when the flumes came before both the planning commission as well as the board. It started back in July of last year. The last meeting we had was on July, July first, twenty twenty-four, where the planning commission recommended denial for this rezoning petition. A community meeting was held on February eighth of twenty twenty-four for this project. The residents met with the developer to discuss the proposed development, and there were about eighty residents present. Many expressed concerns about having a high-density subdivision at this location, and they cited items such as traffic sewer and pressure on existing utilities and facilities as reasons. They would not want this subdivision located there. One resident was in favor, pointing out that it was better to have this type of subdivision concentrated near the highway, where they were conserving a portion of the land, than to have homes sprawled throughout the east side. The applicant noted that with large projects such as ravine and a business park, there will be a demand for housing, and this project met that need while still conserving almost half of the proposed development. And again, the subject site, approximately a hundred and fifty-eight acres at the corner of highways two seventy-eight and one forty-two. The entire development that abuts two churches and two residential subdivisions to the east and the south. And across Highway one forty-two, to the west, you have the east side high school as well as a single-family residential subdivision. This parcel is located in a few character areas. First one is the emerging suburban, and these are included in your packet, so I won't read through everything. But it does show mixed use as an appropriate use, which is one of the uses they are proposing. As well, an appropriate zoning is the cord. And then the second character area is the live-work area, which also shows mixed use as an appropriate land use and a cord as an appropriate zoning. And then they also, they are also near to the village center, which again shows the mixed use as an appropriate land use and the cord as an appropriate zoning. This project was large enough where it had to have a development of regional impact completed, so the project was submitted to the Northeast Georgia Regional Commission, and they completed their report and review, and this is just a synopsis on their findings. And they have, they look at their regional plan and regional resource plan when they review these projects. So the applicant was proposing the construction of a mixed-use development with six hundred and ten residential units and thirty-five thousand square feet of commercial space on the approximate hundred and fifty-five, fifty-eight acres. There were two hundred and ninety-four single-family detached homes, a hundred and forty-six town homes, and the mixed-use portion, which will be situated along Highway one forty-two, has five proposed flex units or live-work units, which would have like a hundred and eighty condos in there roughly. Three small green space areas and a large recreational area, including a clubhouse, a pool, a tennis court, as well as a soccer field are also proposed. Of course, some green space and a trailhead on the southern end of the department. And they're also proposing a picnic pavilion and restrooms, et cetera. The project would be served by the City of Covington's Water and Sewer Systems with an estimated daily demand of zero point one one two five gallons per day for each system. And the finance continues to the development of regional impact that the Northeast Georgia Regional Commission completed. They found no adverse effects the project may have on the surrounding region according to their regional plan's six characteristics. And they do state these as those six that are listed up there, where they look at, you know, it enhances economic mobility and competitiveness, elevates public health and equity, supports and adds value to existing communities, creates housing that is diverse, adequate, equitable, and affordable. It includes transportation choices and is well-connected with existing and planned transportation options. And again, this is according to what their regional plan would require. They did recommend interconnectivity with adjoining parcels and that a developer should consider adding a second access point to Highway two seventy-eight to provide a better traffic flow for entering and exiting the western side of the development. The site plan was submitted on December twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Site plan analysis in terms of land use and density on the hundred and fifty-eight acres. Again, the character areas, according to the comprehensive plan, are appropriate for what they're proposing. The proposed development is located in the Alcovi watershed. An applicant is proposing two hundred and ninety-four single-family units, a hundred and forty-six townhouses, a hundred and eighty flex units, and thirty-five thousand square feet of commercial space. And again, it will front to those two highways, two seventy-eight and one forty-two, and have the walking trails. I've done a comparison. So the cord overlay, it's, it does allow a developer to propose the density and design standards for the board to consider. On the left-hand column, these are the design, design standards that are allowed in the cord, and on the right is what a developer is proposing. I won't read through all, only the ones in red highlighted are the ones that don't meet those requirements. So for number two, minimum lot size. The developer is proposing four point nine units per acre, and according to their zoning, it is agricultural residential, it'll be one acre because they are conserving more than, you know, thirty-three percent of the land. So because of the conservation, they're allowed to go down to half of the two acres, which would be the one acre. But they're proposing their minimum lot, their minimum lot sizes they're proposing as follows, for the various houses they're gonna have. So for cottages, they're proposing four thousand square feet for their lot size, sixty-five hundred for a house, a large house, twelve thousand nine hundred, and a side yard house is nine thousand. The density for their townhomes, it's eight units per acre. According to our ordinance, they're proposing eleven units per acre. All the other, no, so the other requirements that they're asking for that will be outside of the ordinance would be the side setbacks. So generally, there's seven point five feet, fifteen feet, and twenty feet for interior side and rear. And of course, they're asking for these over here, five feet, five feet, five feet, and five. And of course, for the corner lot for the townhomes, you know, they're doing five feet. So they, all the other requirements I said they have met, I don't, this is why I don't have them highlighted in red, but those were the ones that differed from what the cord would allow. I'm looking at the landscape buffers. They are required to have a fifty-foot transitional buffer around the perimeter of the project. However, within the project and between uses, that is not required because it is a corridor mixed use that they are proposing. And they have to develop their walking trail and so on in accordance with our ordinance. So the Public Works Department and the Fire Department, they have given a preliminary approval of the layout of the site plan. When the City of Covington, we received a letter. While they do not have the capacity today, they have said that it is on the developer, the burden is on the developer to provide the infrastructure and develop the area, and whenever they're ready in the future, they would see if the capacity is available to assist them. But the city wouldn't be doing the developing of the infrastructure for them. This is just a section of the traffic study that was proposed, and just a summary. So we have the AM peak hours totaling five ninety-two, your PM peak hours at nine hundred and forty-five trips, and school PM peak hours at seven hundred and twenty-two trips. And this is also located in your packets. So in conclusion, the approximately a hundred and fifty-eight acres is currently undeveloped. This, the character areas for the core that are suitable are the emerging suburban, village center, and the live-work character areas. The development of regional impact was completed, and the Northeast Georgia Commission found no adverse effects that a project may have on, based on their regional plan's six characteristics. But they have recommended, you know, that they have that additional access point. So the proposed planned development, just to recap, would consist of mixed uses, thirty-five thousand square feet of commercial space, two hundred and ninety-four single-family detached lots, a hundred and forty-six townhomes, and the five flex units with a hundred and eighty condominiums. And then they're gonna have office and commercial space. And again, the traffic study was completed with the trips that were mentioned before, five hundred and ninety-two total AM, nine hundred and forty-five total PM peak hour trips, and seven hundred and twenty-two school hour, peak hour trips. So while the request to rezone the cord is compatible with the county's character areas and according to the twenty twenty-three comp plan, as well as Northeast Georgia Regional's plan, it lies in the Alcovi River watershed. So this watershed specifies a minimum lot size of two acres. An applicant is requesting a higher density with a compact design, which will preserve approximately fifty percent of the development. So while most of the suggested zoning requirements as stated in the proposed design standards of the development comply with Division three hundred for the core, there are some that do not meet the minimum development standards. So the minimum lot size in the core defaults to the underlying zoning of AR, which is two acres due to the Alcovi watershed. The proposed average minimum lot size for the single-family homes is seven thousand eight hundred square feet according to the developer. The density for the single-family homes would also default, default to the AR residential base zoning of the one unit per two acres, and the base density for the townhomes is eight units per acre. The proposed density for the single-family homes according to the developer is four point nine acres per unit, and townhomes are at eleven point eight five units per acre. And again, the side setbacks, they are proposing, the cord has the seven point five feet and fifteen feet, and they are proposing five feet and ten feet. So the cord, like I said, it defaults back to the base density for the design standards. There's a section in the cord as well, three hundred zero four zero HB, which does allow the board some latitude to consider what the developer is asking for approval. And staff has made their recommendations based on what the cord will allow, and this is what I have stated here. So should this petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners? It should be approved, the cord PRC, Community-Oriented Residential Development, Planned Residential Commercial Development, conditional, subject to the owner's agreement, to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the board. So the owner's agreement to abide by the following, I won't read through all of them. It is quite lengthy and they are included in your packet, but I think the main ones are the density, right? So they're conserving about forty-seven percent, and it would allow them to reduce their lot sizes to the one acre average for the single-family dwellings, and the townhomes will be at eight units per acre. And based on the acreages for the single-family homes, which is fifty-nine point zero five that they are using, and the acreage there for the side for the townhomes, twelve point three two acres, this would yield them a hundred and sixty-two dwellings, which would be just fifty-nine single-family dwellings and a hundred and three townhouses. So it is a little less than what they were proposing. And then we are in agreement with the thirty-five thousand total square feet for retail space and accessory uses. The minimum lot sizes, again, the cord allows it to be for single-family homes, forty-three, five, six square feet or one acre. Townhomes, you know, twelve thousand square feet with a maximum density of eight units per acre. And the minimum heated floor area as follows. The cottages, nine hundred square feet, single-family sixteen hundred, large single-family twenty-two hundred, townhomes twelve hundred, and a side yard house at sixteen hundred square feet. Like I said, I won't go through all of these requirements. It goes on to recommend the setbacks per the cord, which I read out before in the table above. And then we have the recommendations for your, for our commercial buildings. It does recommend that the parking default to what, you know, the ordinance recommends. And these are just the access points and the specifications as approved by our Transportation Department. And it just speaks of which highway they will access developments on, how many access points. And it's quite lengthy because we got very specific based on what was provided. I would like to read into the record the store water plan to be reviewed by and approved by the county engineer. And E, the following uses shall not be permitted on the subject property. A, convenience stores with or without gasoline pumps. B, gas stations. C, vape shops. D, adult novelty stores. E, pawn shops. F, massage parlors. G, tattoo parlors. H, automobile sales and service. I, automobile repair or exchange emission facilities. J, car washes. And then they are to comply with all development standards as required in section three hundred dash zero two zero A through P. And the G, incorporate design standards as submitted in the Sockwell Eastside Village Design Standards. And the conditions of zoning and the zoning ordinance shall supersede any conflicting standards. So they have submitted their design standards packet, it is included in your packets, and they have proposed some of the conditions or some of the densities that they are wanting to put there. And then the cord has the ones that we've presented. So this is what is before the board today. And Chairman, yes, this is the public hearing.
Thank you. Ms. Appleweight, I mean, this is approximately seven forty-seven. We're gonna open it up now for our public comments part of this public hearing tonight.
I'm so sorry, Chairman. I do have the maps to go through. It'll be quick. My apologies.
Okay, go ahead.
So this is the location, of course, at Highway two seventy-eight and one forty-two, East Side High School over here. And this is our zoning, AR. Future land use map, rural residential. Alcovi River watershed. The character area maps, live-work in the green and emerging suburban as well as the village center. And of course, Commissioner District Map. And of course, Commissioner District Map Five. This is a survey that was proposed or that was submitted. And this is a concept plan site layout showing the single-family homes, townhomes, and commercial areas down here. And these are some samples of the homes that they have provided for us, the single-family homes. Again, there's some additional styles. Single-family detached. These are examples of the townhomes that they are proposing. And examples of the flex units that they are proposing. And then the applicant has their presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. It's approximately seven forty-eight. We allow ten minutes for the applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight. You may come at this time. Please state your name, your address, please. We're gonna ask those that's in attendance, please from, please refrain from booing, clapping, or anything like that. We are in a live board meeting. Please treat it like that. The deputies are here tonight to strictly enforce that. So please, ma'am, please, sir. Good evening.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Board of Commissioners, good evening. My name is Kyle Wise, twenty-eight forty-nine, Paces Ferry Road, Atlanta, Georgia, three zero three three nine.
Sir, if you could, could you please talk into the mic so the people behind you can hear you, please?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. I'm here tonight on behalf of Sockwell Corners LLC. It's the owner of this property, as well as the applicant on the land use petition, Mr. Ed Hutter, along with his company, Integral Enterprises. Here tonight is representatives of Sockwell are Ms. Madison Ellis and Sarah Ellis. Mr. Hutter's here, along with Mr. Randy Benson on behalf of the applicant. This, this application has been discussed pretty thoroughly. I'm just gonna hit on a few points and reserve my remaining time for rebuttal. The piece of property, about a hundred and fifty, one hundred and fifty-eight acres, strategically sits at the intersection of Highway two seventy-eight and Highway one forty-two. It's undeveloped and has two streams on it. My clients and their family have had this property since the nineteen seventies, and it's been titled with Sockwell Corners, the current owner, since two thousand and eight. As Ms. Applewhite mentioned, the current zoning is AR, which is agricultural residential. We contend that that zoning renders the property uneconomic, unmarkable, and infeasible to develop. It's also inconsistent with the county's comprehensive development plan, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a minute. So we're here tonight asking this board to change the zoning on the property from AR to the cord to afford my clients a reasonable economic use to develop with the project proposed. Ms. Applewhite described the project for the board, but I would like to hit on a couple, three points of that. Importantly, about fifty-five acres of the property will remain undeveloped green space and will have community walking trails, a recreational area, and related amenities as part of this project. There will also be a hundred-foot undisturbed buffer around the site. And all of the housing product that's been proposed and described will be for-sale product. Now, on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, this board unanimously passed a resolution adopting the twenty-three update to the Newton County Comprehensive Plan. That was the result of a ten-month process in which land use professionals, landowners, elected officials, and other stakeholders all participated. My clients have presented a proposed project, which we believe precisely meets the land use objectives and official policies of that plan. Now, what are some of those official policies? The comprehensive plan contains needs and opportunities for the county, which have been identified during the planning process as expressly providing benefits to the community. In terms of the location of this property, on, on page fifty-one, the plan states that the Highway two seventy-eight corridor, where my client's property is located, quote, presents an opportunity for future locations of higher-density residential and mixed-use development, close quote. We agree, and that's why we have presented our mixed-use land, land, land use project before you tonight. In terms of economic development to benefit the community, the development plan states there's a need for more retail and restaurants throughout the county, a need to improve quality of life amenities, a need for flex space to help grow business, and a need for more workforce development opportunities. Again, our project checks the box of these needs identified within the plan. If we look at the character areas, which were included within the staff's report and were alluded to, this property is located in the village center, live-work areas, and emerging suburban character areas. The, the, the plan for the village center character area states that land uses are suitable for highway, commercial, high-density residential, and mixed-use development. And the live-work character area is suitable for a mix of neighborhood-level commercial, multifamily residential housing, and walkable streets. Our proposed project checks the boxes of what the, the plan calls for on the property. And the planning staff correctly found that the proposed cord mixed-use project is consistent with these policies and intent. Importantly, the existing AR zoning is not an approved zoning district in the village center character area or the live-work character area, which is why we're before you tonight, asking you to change the zoning on the property to the core district to make it consistent with the current comprehensive plan. And in fact, the decision to keep the existing AR zoning on the property would be entirely inconsistent with the comprehensive development plan that was just passed in June of twenty twenty-three. In addition to the county planning staff, the Northeast Georgia Regional Commission also looked at this and completed a development of regional impact, which found, among other things, that my client's proposed development is compatible with the county's comprehensive development plan, as well as the Northeast Georgia Regional Plan. My clients have brought a project that checks all the boxes of the county's comprehensive development plan and the Northeast Georgia Regional Plan. And for all these reasons, we would respectfully request that the board approve the zoning application as submitted by my clients and just reserve my remaining time for rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. It's three minutes and twenty-five seconds. Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else wanna speak in favor tonight? Anyone else wanna speak in favor tonight? Thank you. We also allow ten minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. At this time, you may come and state your name for the address, state your name for the record, your name and your address for the record, please. Guys, we want to remind you tonight that clapping and booing would not be tolerated tonight. So please, ma'am, please, sir, please understand that tonight. You have ten minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, sir.
Dave Norton of Newborn, Georgia. These two ladies are here just to handle handouts for the commissioners for me.
So.
During my speech.
Ms. Ham, would you please get that? Yeah, we don't, we, we, we'll give it to someone to give it out.
Okay, so I need each of the commissioners to see these handouts.
She gonna, they gonna get them. Somebody gonna hand them to them.
Okay, thank you. Let them have them. While they're here, if you'll notice their shirts that they made themselves, it says, "We do not fit the demographics." The demographics say that young people want this type. And these ladies say, "No, we don't fit it. They're not the only ones." Good evening, Newton County. My name is Dave Norton of Newborn, Georgia, co-founder of Save East Newton, CEO and chief pooper-scooper at Turkey Strut Farm in Newborn, one of many small farms in East Newton. I would think you would all know by now who is Save East Newton. For those that don't know, we are a group of citizens that believe the county should listen to all citizens, not just a few looking to profit at our expense. Currently, our Facebook page has over seven hundred and thirty members and many more who just don't do the social media thing. We also have an online petition against these projects. These things are in the handouts with over four hundred signatures. Everything in this presentation pertains, pertains to REZ two four zero 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 one and two and could very well pertain to other projects, not just in District Five, but Districts One, Two, Three, and Four, City of Covington, Port Adele, Oxford, Mansfield, and Newborn as well. We welcome new neighbors with open arms, but these projects do not match the existing subdivisions like Deerfield, Newton Ridge, Elks Club, and others. There is other areas just a couple of miles up the road with this type zoning at the Hub and Brick Store. Have been for a while, but no residential has been built. Why? If there is a future, if there is a demand for this in East Newton in the future, then it would have been done to make a profit. Everyone's looking to make a profit. No demand, no profit. That's why they are not there. They are giving the impression that this type of housing is in demand. A large portion of new housing within five miles of this project is rental. A lot are still empty or have lowered rates, mostly in the city of Covington and on sewer with more under construction. Do not believe the smokescreen these developers are putting up. They must have ulterior motives. There has previously been talk in this boardroom of outdated zoning ordinances for Newton County. If this is true, should we not clean up first? You don't invite people into your home if it is not clean, dirty, dishes in the sink, dog hair in the corner from the ceiling fan, and litter block, litter box not cleaned from yesterday. We must have our house in order before we invite someone in. Commissioner, your third handout. Commissioner Sanders appealed a preliminary plat hearing a couple weeks back. In this hearing, she said, and I quote, "Newton is full," end quote. She presented this chart that you have in front of you, showing school capacities and current enrollment with three hundred and sixty-six and six hundred and ten units, right at a thousand. Between these two projects, and with more on Elks Club and the rumor mill, this will put us well over capacity on our schools, degrading the quality of education here. School rankings are very high on the list of criteria when families are looking to move into a new area. Quote, "Newton is full," end quote. We've been doing this for a little over a year now. One of the first times we were here. Commissioner Mason stated more than once, quote, "Growth follows sewer," end quote. Not approved growth without adequate and proper infrastructure already in place. In our flume book, under Emerging Suburban Action Items, it states, quote, "Guide growth to areas that have structure in place and/or planned." Also, preserve and protect the Yellow River, South River, and Alcovee River from development." End quote from the book. The only thing I've seen in writing for sewer is a letter dated December twenty-three. It states, "City of Covington has the capacity for one project on that day." Not any future projects that may come up before in their current service areas. At a previous meeting, Phil Johnson stated he had been in talks with Covington Sewer. In line communities stated they were in discussion with Covington Sewer at their presentation for the planning commissioning meeting. Talk is cheap. It doesn't hold water. Or in the case of sewer expansion, it doesn't hold poop. Quote, "Growth follows sewer," end quote. I have been told that other developers may be attending our meeting to see how we handle business here. Send them a message. Newton BOC does not have a rubber stamp and will not be intimidated. Quote, "Newton is full," end quote. Now, Mr. Chairman, I ask you, how many people in this room under the age of thirty-five do you see that want a home with a yard and a garden and maybe a chicken or two, a place for their kids to play? Mr. Chairman, I ask you, how many citizens do you see in this room that moved here at some time, at some point in their lives to raise their children, retire here away from Atlanta, Gwinnett's, Rockdale, and Henry's growing pains? Oh, there's so many of them. Mr. Chairman, how many citizens do you see in this room that have lived here their entire lives and do not like the tight growth that has been allowed here the past several years? Mr. Chairman, how many citizens do you see in this room that want a five to zero unanimous decision of rezoning REZ two four zero 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 one and two? Quote, "Newton is full," end quote. Quote, "Growth follows sewer," end quote. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to speak against this project tonight? Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Hey there. My name is Rhiannon Townley. I'm at one fifty-five River Meadow Lane Social Circle. That's Newton County side. That's District Five where this will be. Kind of try to keep it a little shorter than I planned on, but I am a local real estate agent. I'm very in tune with what our housing needs are in our community. I'm also a former teacher, so I have been able to see firsthand how these big, high-density developments are, are impacting our local area. And just like what David said, we're full right now in a five-mile radius of this development. There are four thousand four hundred units coming out of the ground. That's rental, that's for sale. It's all high-density, though. And I want to bring to your attention that developers are bringing these to our area. They're saying that we need housing to attract workers, current economic developments, businesses, Rivian, the pretty word. They're saying things like, "Growth's coming. You've gotta adapt. You've gotta let us in." That's false. I live it every day. I deal with a lot of clients coming to Newton County, a lot of business people coming to Newton County, and they are not asking me to live on top of their neighbor. Absolutely not. They are asking me for custom homes, detached homes, not townhomes, not condos. Many of them are wanting land over two acres, pools, basements, large square footage, yards. That's the biggest ask we get, guys, is yards for their kids, yards for their doggies. That's what we're getting. We're not asked, they're not asking us for traffic coming out of one entrance or two entrances. They wanna walk the street with their dog. And that, this is not what this applicant is proposing for this area. And then this is currently zoned for two-acre tracks right now. It is able to be used and to build, build homes on two-acre tracks. That's honestly what we need in this area right now. I've got people moving out of this area left and right because we can't meet their housing needs. And then we can't meet the housing needs of the people that we are trying to attract to generate that tax revenue, to get better businesses, like, you know, you hear the pretty words, Trader Joe's and the Lowe's and the restaurants. We have to have a certain income level for that. We have to have housing for those people, too. We have plenty of housing that's high-density right now in Newton County, and we don't need anymore. I would love for these developers to come back and to talk with the citizens, and let's make a plan to put houses on two acres on this track because that is what fits here. That is what the court suggests, even on one-acre tracks. But the, it, and Ms., and Sheena's presentation, it says, "This doesn't fit here," over and over and over. There's twenty-one items, I believe, in her presentation, that they would have to change to make this work here. That, that shows you that it doesn't fit. It doesn't work, and we don't need it. Thank you.
Anyone else? You have one minute and twenty-three seconds. One minute and twenty-three seconds. Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Woodward, and I live in the, the Broadleaf subdivision off of Wildflower Trail. I've been up here multiple times, asking for multiple things, but this particular item is very close to my heart because I don't live in that district, but I live in another district, and this whole county is important to me. All of us go from one end of this county to another, so I'm tired of being able to only vote for one. I'd like to see us vote for all of y'all and clean house based on what we citizens want. If any of you vote for this to go in, it may cost you your reelection. I am completely honest. We care about our children. We care about their future. Not a single county in Georgia prospers by multifamily stack-up housing. Let's take a look at the places that have failed. Do we really want to be that here? Or do we enjoy the quiet kind of country life that we enjoy here? I do. That's why I moved here. Many people like me will leave if this doesn't get cleaned up. Many people who have brought a lot of the money and a lot of the tax dollars into this community are going to leave. And then you'll be left with the takers, okay?
Thank you.
I'd like to see that end. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That portion of our public comments are closed. We're gonna revert back to the applicant. We're going to revert back to the applicant. I think he has three minutes and twenty-five, twenty-five seconds left.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Couple of quick points. There was a mention about, doesn't match other subdivisions in the area. I would just point out that those subdivisions predate the passing of your current comprehensive development plan. And so, what, what we have proposed here is in line with what was approved by this board in June of twenty-twenty-three. In terms of, of negative impacts on surrounding areas, I would refer you to the staff report, which found that there would be no adverse impacts, as well as the Northeast Georgia Regional Commission. And what, what that board commission specifically found was that there's no adverse effects the project might have on the surrounding region, according to their regional plan's six characteristics, which are those same six characteristics that Ms. Applewhite put up on the board and discussed earlier.
Let me ask you, can you speak into the mic, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, just to conclude in terms of the sewer, at this point, which, this is a zoning land use decision, we have submitted the letter required for our application from the City of Covington, which states that sewer capacity is available. My client confirmed with the city yesterday that the sewer capacity letter remains good. In other words, the capacity's still there. And we are confident that upon approval of, of this application, that the sewer extension will be accomplished to serve this proposed project. So, but that's really an issue that will be resolved for, once the building permit stage comes up and the permits are issued. So, I appreciate the board's time and consideration tonight, and again, just respectfully request that this rezoning application be approved or submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Ms. Applewhite, that portion of our public hearing is closed. Ms. Applewhite, if you would, please come on back up. I think this is a District Five project. Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As commissioner, we have, we don't have the luxury of doing things certain ways, but we have to represent the intent of the people out there, so I'm going to recommend a motion to deny the rezoning request.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second? Commissioner Edwards? It's been motioned by Commissioner Cowan that we deny this, and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, it's amazing to me how we just brushed right over the sewer. I spoke with the Sewer Department of City of Covington yesterday, too, and they are no closer, that while the capacity for this development and another development exists today, the infrastructure is probably years away from reaching this particular development. So, I, I just don't, I don't know how you proceed without sewer. Maybe if we had sewer, we have another discussion, but, well, not for me, but, you know, I, it's, it's how we just, we, we brushed right over it. I don't understand. And my understanding is there's a buyer waiting for this rezoning request, and we, we had some pictures of some, of some homes, townhomes, that could possibly be developed. How do we know the buyer will adhere to those at all? Those look like nice establishments, you know, nice homes, but how do we know that's what the buyer would adhere to at a certain, if it's, if it's to be sold? So, I just want to make those points. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. And this is Stan. So, so you're saying they don't have sewer capacity at this point for that project?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The capacity exists, but the infrastructure to get to that capacity does not exist. That's tens of millions from what I was told yesterday. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor of denying this project? All in favor? Thank you. Project standing now, five votes. Ms. Applewhite?
Thank you, Chairman. Our second petition this evening, it's R E Z twenty-four dash zero 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 one. This is located at Highway two seventy-eight, and there's one address, one eleven oh one, Highway two seventy-eight. In fact, the parcel size is ninety-three point seven nine acres total approximately. I'm just going to read into record the parcels that they are considering for the rezoning. We have ninety-nine dash zero zero, ninety-nine dash zero zero one E, ninety-nine dash zero four, zero zero four A, zero zero four B, zero zero four D, zero zero four E, zero zero one A, zero zero three, ninety-nine dash zero zero one D, and ninety-nine dash zero four five, and zero zero two. The existing land use map is a development node. The current zoning is agricultural, residential, and highway commercial. They are also proposing zoning of a cord, P R C, which is the Community Oriented Residential Development, Planned Residential Commercial Development. It is in Alcovee River Watershed, District Five. The current owners we have are John Dillon, currently, and we have J. H. Morgan Farms Family L. P. The petitioner is also J. H. Morgan Farms Family L. P. This is an update from what was previously submitted. They recently submitted a documentation to add the Morgans as a petitioner as well, and then the other one is inline communities, and the rep today is Philip Johnson. An applicant's intent, again, is to rezone from A R to a cord, and this will be a mixed-use development with commercial, residential, and civic uses. And you do have the history listed before you, where the flume was approved by the board to change the flume to development node last year, and then on July first, the planning department recommended denial for this rezoning petition to a cord. And again, we're just the subject site and the surrounding areas. It's ninety-three point seven nine acres, and there are several parcels, as were previously read. We have commercially zoned parcel, which fronts Highway two seventy-eight, and has a sewer substation located on it. Then we have the parcels ninety-nine, one A, forty-five, zero four five, zero zero two, and zero zero three, which are developed homes on them. And the remaining parcels are undeveloped at this time. The entire proposed development above the City of Covington to the north and the west, and Highway two seventy-eight to the south. And to the north and east is the Alcovee Crossing subdivision. The character areas, and I won't read all of this, it is included in your packets, but this is also included in the emerging suburban character area. And again, appropriate land use is development node, which is what they currently have, and appropriate zoning is the cord. They're also located in the live-work character area, which appropriate land use is development node, and an appropriate zoning is the cord. And then they also have the conservation/recreation character area, and this is mostly the area floodplain, which I will show you a little later on. And of course, the land use is our parks, rec, and conservation, as where their trails are going to be located, and of course, the watershed protection overlay would be one of their appropriate zonings. Site plan analysis was submitted to our department in December of twenty-twenty-three, and again, it's approximately ninety acres. Of course, you have the three character areas that are appropriate according to our comp plan. So what they're proposing, this development, unlike the last one, it's not large enough to have, to make, for it to be a D R I, so it did not go to the Northeast Georgia Regional Commission, because it's a much, it's a smaller subdivision. But they are proposing the following. So it is located in the Alcovee Watershed and has proportions of the floodplain on it. They're proposing two hundred and three single-family homes, a hundred and sixty-three townhomes, fifty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty square feet of commercial space, and they're going to have four access points off of Highway two seventy-eight that lead to the commercial component of the development. And then you have the townhomes located immediately behind the commercial, and then that's followed by the single-family homes further north. And this is a similar chart comparison, so on the left-hand side, this is what the cord and ordinance currently allows, and then this is what they're proposing. And I'm going to go highlight the areas in red, as this is, these are the areas that would differ from what they're proposing. So, they are, their minimum will be one acre, they can actually go down to the twenty-five, about twenty-one thousand square feet, which would be half of the acre, because they're, if they're conserving more than thirty-three percent. But they are proposing three point one eight units per acre instead of the one unit per acre, and the mag, the minimum, the lot sizes that they're looking at is five thousand square feet, when, you know, they're up at an acre for that. And I think this was the only requirement that they did not meet. So they, their densities for the townhomes, they met those, they met the setbacks. So I won't read through these. If there are any questions on that, I can answer those. And again, so these are just additional requirements, and again, they have met those. Minimum heated square feet, and their parking. And again, this, for landscape and buffers, they are required to have a fifty-foot traditional transitional buffer around the perimeter of the property. However, within the different sections of the development, no transitional buffer is required. And of course, they have to develop their walking trail in accordance with the Newton County Unified Development Ordinance. Preliminary reviews were done by Public Works in the Fire Department, and they have given preliminary approval of the layout of the site plan. And again, this, this is also going to be, the City of Covington would be the utility provider, and again, the burden is on the developer to provide the infrastructure. The city will not do that, and at the time, in the future, if it is done, then, you know, it will be up for consideration with the city for sewer availability. This is the traffic study that was submitted to our department. This is just a summary from the traffic study, and they are proposing the A M. peak hour trips to be two hundred and ninety-eight, the P M. peak hour trips will be four hundred and ten, and the school P M. peak hour will be four hundred and thirty-four trips. And in conclusion, so approximately ninety acres is currently largely undeveloped. Of course, our suitable character areas for the cord would be the emerging suburban, live-work corridor, and the conservation/recreation character areas. And the planned development they're proposing will consist of mixed uses, residential and non-residential, as well as their trails. So they're proposing three hundred and sixty-six total residential units. Two hundred and three of those will be single-family homes, and a hundred and sixty-three will be townhomes. And the non-residential component will be fifty-four thousand two hundred and ninety square feet, and that will be on ten acres. And again, a traffic study was completed, and I read those numbers into the record earlier. Where's two hundred and ninety-eight peak hours in the morning, four hundred and ten in the afternoon, and during the school afternoon, four hundred and thirty-four peak hour trips. So the request to rezone to a cord, it is appropriate according to the character areas and the development node. And the proposed development, it lies in the Alcovee Watershed. So while most of the proposed zone requirements are stated in the proposed design standards, and that is a packet that is included with your petition, right, it comply with Division three hundred for the cord, there is one that does not meet the minimum development standards, and that would be the minimum lot size. Again, they are at one acre due to the development node flume, and of course, they are proposing for their single-family residents to do five thousand square feet. And just to compare, that one acre is forty-three, five, sixty square feet, and they're asking to do five thousand. So the density for the single-family homes would also default to the A R. based zoning as stated before. The townhome density is eight units per acre, and of course, they're proposing three point one eight units per acre for their single-family homes. They do meet the requirements for the setback at seven point five and fifteen feet for the corner lots, and as well as the seven point five minimum for the other setbacks. So the cord does, the cord requires that the densities should be according to the base zoning, in this case, which is A R., which, of course, they don't meet at this time. The cord also allows the board in the section three hundred zero four zero to have a discretion to consider the densities and the design standards that a developer is proposing for approval. And staff made its recommendations based on what is allowed in the cord. So should this petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners? It should be approved for a cord, P R C., Community Oriented Residential Development, Planned Residential Commercial Development, conditional and subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. And to the owner's agreements, abide by the following development standards. And again, I won't go through all of them. I'll just do the applicable ones. In this case, it would be density. So A, no more than two hundred and sixty-six homes, which will be a hundred and sixty-three townhomes, and just sixty-three single-family homes. And of course, the density, we're looking at one unit per acre, or whichever's less. B, no more than fifty-eight thousand total square feet for the retail, office, and accessory uses and structures, at a maximum density of fifteen thousand square feet per acre designated for non-residential uses. And then C, it addresses the minimum lot sizes. So staff is proposing the forty-three, five, sixty square feet or the one acre, or they can go down to twenty-one, seven, eighty square feet if they conserve a minimum of thirty-three percent of the overall subdivision. Townhomes, minimum of twelve thousand square feet with a maximum density of eight units per acre, and of course, a minimum heated dwelling units, that's section D. So they are proposing sixteen hundred square feet, and that is appropriate. Townhomes, twelve hundred square feet. And then, of course, like I said, I won't read through everything. They have met the side setbacks as what we are recommending as well. And of course, you have it for the townhomes and your commercial buildings. This goes into the requirements for the access points, and it goes into details on what is required based on what was submitted in their trans, in their traffic study, and what was reviewed by our Transportation Department for approval. I won't read through all of these. They are included in your packet, but it does address the access points that will be required for this subdivision. And there are about four of them. I do want to read into the record what would be the prohibited uses. So the following uses shall not be permitted on the subject property. A, convenience stores with or without gasoline pumps, gas stations, vape shops, adult novelty stores, pawn shops, massage parlors, tattoo parlors, automobile sales and service, automobile repair, oil change emissions facilities, and car washes. And the G, they will comply with all development standards as required by three hundred dash zero to zero A. through P. And H, incorporate design standards as submitted in the Morgan Farms Design Standards, but the conditions of zoning and the zoning ordinance shall supersede any conflicting standards that they have submitted. This is the location along Highway two seventy-eight, the pink area or the city of Covington limits, and these are the parcels that they are proposing. It's not all of them in here. Current zoning is A R., and then it also includes the C. H. in front here. Of course, a development node that was approved by the board last year for those parcels that they are considering to use. It's in Alcovee River Watershed, Commissioner District Five. And these are the conserva, the character areas. So the pink is the emerging suburban, you have the live-work along two seventy-eight down here, and this is the conservation/recreation area where they're proposing to have their trails and the civic uses for the development. This is a survey that was submitted for this project, boundary survey. This is a concept of what they're proposing, where they're going to have their single-family homes, commercial, and of course, this is the walking trails on this section here. And this is a concept plan of the actual site plan, commercial in front, townhomes, single-family homes in the back, walking trails, and the other amenities over here. This is just the plat that was submitted. These are just examples of some of the types of homes that they are proposing. So we've got the townhomes here, this is the commercial above here, where it's located here. And then we go into some single-family homes. This is just some additional homes. And of course, just examples of what the trails will look like, some of the amenities that they're proposing over here, their parks and what are trail, their trails, and so on. And the applicant is here, and they do have a presentation as well.
Thank you so much. I mean, it's eight twenty-seven, we're going to go into our public, our public hearing. The applicant and those- The applicant and those that in favor, you may come at this time, you have ten minutes to do so. The applicant and those that want to speak in favor tonight, we have ten minutes to do so. Again, we want to remind you guys, please ma'am, please respect the person that's up here that is speaking, we are not going to allow any booing or clapping in this meeting tonight, so please refrain from doing that.
We have a, a presentation, just so I know it's hard to see on the board, if we can provide, provide the handouts.
I got you, one second, we'll get someone to hand it out. Thank you. Ms. Ham, can you please hand that out for me, please, thank you. Sir, also, if you can, speak into the mic for me, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Kenneth Wood, three fifty Research Court, Peachtree Corners, Georgia. In summary of what we're going to be talking about as we go through the plan, looking at it here, this is the, the site location, we have compliance, as you heard from staff, we have compliance on the comp plan, the flu that was changed, approved in November of two thousand and twenty-three, our code requirements, it's the density that I'll talk about, that is the only thing of this application that we are not compliant with, we have a reasonable density for what we are proposing, we're on a four-lane road with the traffic signal, we do have a sewer solution, we're removing a Newton County pump station at the school, working with City of Covington, and actually have a gravity route across the Alkovee to tie in, and that is confirmed with Kevin Saro that we've been working with, we're in the village node, we're stipulating the product types, all of the conditions that you see, that is so that we guarantee the quality of what we show in the presentation, that's what we, you will receive, and we are willing to restrict on rentals as well to make sure this does not become a rental community. As we go through the plan, looking here, the Morgan family has owned it since nineteen forty-six, that's when they came, they've been in the community for as long as you can imagine, doing a lot of different services, and it's time for them to sell a portion of the farm. This is when the flume was approved as part of this, this shows the Village Center and how we're compliant, and how our plan complies with that center, and this is the main thing to, to show you guys, on the, on the left side, and you can see on a couple of different ones, we have nine thousand six hundred and sixty feet of walking trails along the Alkovee, that would be public, we're planning on building a civic public area right near our commercial that you could park at, get on the trails and walk all the way up, once you get to the top, there would be a gate, residents could continue through the gate and actually walk through the subdivision, those would be public roads that we are proposing. Everything, very nice upscale, three hundreds to five hundreds, we have fifty-five acres of flood, that's where those trails would be, and we have two hundred and three single-family lots. And for our plan, we're trying to comply with, with the different code, the way it talks about the one acre and that code section, it, it, it seems a little like, it, we're, it almost seems like it encourages more multifamily, because you, you could take thirty percent and do two hundred and something townhomes, we really are looking for the single-family detached, really being willing to do, of the ones we showed, the seventy-footers on the border, the fifty-footers, you know, we're willing to remove all the townhomes and do the single-family detached of those lot sizes, and have a single-family detached and the commercial up front. We feel like the commercial is, is warranted up where the light is, that would be all neighborhood retail, we would condition that to that, and really, it's all about transition. When you're looking at the plan, you see the single-family to our east, and then we have our larger lots that are against the border, and then you go to single-family, and then you go to the undeveloped portion of the land, and then over to the creek. So, it's all about the transition that we are proposing for the site. This is the trails that we are proposing, we're proposing to have a hard surface so that it won't wash away like the national parks, and the amenities that we're looking at are second to none, we're looking to have fire pits, a major, basically amenity that would have a clubhouse, we'd have pickleball courts, dog parks, playgrounds throughout, and a resort-style pool, and really trying to accentuate the architecture and everything that we do. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Johnson to complete the rest of the presentation, if I could stop the time. Nope, I guess he'll click over.
Thank you, sir. Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Thank you, my name is Philip Johnson, my address is twenty-one seventy-three Floyd Street, Covington, Georgia. Thanks, gentlemen and ladies, the, you know, I've, I've been up to present this in the past when we passed, when y'all approved the flume, the, so you've heard our presentation about our package, I think it's important to remember that this board in two thou, in this, in the summer of two thousand and twenty-three approved the Comprehensive Land Use Plan for Newton County, and in that, you approved categories for Morgan Farm, which would authorize us to seek the rezoning for the development node to develop this property. And, and then, in November of two thousand and twenty-three, this board approved a flume amendment to the future land use maps, creating our of, of flume situation where we could apply for the court development to seek to develop the property as we presented. So, so this has been before this board. With that, I would like to reserve the rest of my time for rebuttal, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else like to speak in favor tonight? Thank you, we're going to reserve four minutes and fifty-six seconds. We also allow ten minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight, you may come at this time, please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Good evening, I'm back. My name is Riannon Townley, I'm at one fifty-five River Meadow Lane, Social Circle, that is Newton County District Five. You know, you've already heard from me once this evening, my present, previous presentation holds true for this development as well. As you guys all know, and you are aware of, that high-density developments are being built at an alarming rate in our county, so much that it is the number-one topic of conversation at the meetings, at the rezonings, on Facebook. The citizens of our county, the citizens that I know, the citizens I talk with, the citizens here tonight, believe that our beloved county is being targeted right now for financial gain and growth by out-of-area developers, they don't have addresses in Covington, without the citizens' needs being considered by the board. We, the citizens, have to live here, when all of these developers go to waste, and these projects are finished, and these landowners sell and move, and so that's why you see such a turnout here tonight. This development particularly would be an influx of another three hundred and sixty-six tight, sixty-six tight housing units, and then there's also, I think, a fifty-five thousand square foot commercial space that wasn't mentioned too much earlier. That's eight point two four high-density units per acre on average, and that's all in Chino's report, that breaks it down to three point one eight houses an acre, and nineteen point seventy-seven townhomes per acre. And I want to remind you that this is not in line with surrounding homes, which is a factor in rezoning. This parcel is surrounded by homes on large parcels of lands, the neighborhood Alkovee Crossing is right next to it, those parcels have one-acre lots. This parcel itself is surrounded by big tracts of land, it's even called Morgan Farms, so it's not surrounded by commercial and high-density use, units. It is zoned to a point that it could be used with two-acre tracts and one-acre tracts as it currently is, it does adjoin even our brand-new county high school, Eastside, and that, for as far as what I know, it is at capacity, which is a factor that needs to be considered when putting high-density around this high school. This, this plan is going to bring even more traffic and congestion to this two seventy-eight corridor, more units brings more students, struggling with overcrowding, we just don't have the infrastructure right now in place, all of these, these plans have, well, we'll get it, we'll get sewer, and like Mr. Edwards says, we don't have it now, and we are years away from having this, we are millions of dollars away from having this, we don't have the sewer in place now for this. And the, the, the city of Covington, they're speaking with everybody, and they're trying to, to play nice with everybody, but their, their letter basically says that they'll take care of it after their current projects are done, when they have time, it's not a guarantee to allow this development to hook up, it just doesn't support it. It also keeps being stated that this particular property was in flume approved, and all these meetings where all this was approved, the future land use map says that it's okay, I read the land use map, too, it's, the back of it is full of citizens' comments saying high-density is not wanted, high-density is not wanted, over and over and over and over and over, and it's also, the character overlays that are being mentioned, the, the flumes that are being mentioned, those also have one-acre tracts recommended, it's not twenty houses an acre, so the, the thing they keep mentioning, it has the two acres and the AR zoning, but, you know, with the conservation of the land, it's down to one acre, one home per one acre, not twenty townhomes per one acre, so I really want to clear that up with everybody. As a real estate agent, again, I know what our clients are wanting, I know what our citizens are wanting, even my rental clients, I had a call today, that he does not want to be on top of neighbors, and he is not going in an apartment, so that is what your citizens want, they're not wanting this. The beauty of Newton County is, we do have diverse housing, we have all types of housing already, we have enough of these high-density units in Newton County, and, and when these meetings take this long, that should be an indicator for you all, and when there's twenty-one pages of conditions, I think this one had three full pages on the report, that this is too much for interpretation, this is not the right thing for this spot, when there's this many things that need to be changed. We've seen these developers try to change these zonings many times, they can come back for variances, they can change more, we've seen that over and over again, we've seen them not go to capacity as far as sales go, and then them turn into rental units, just like Dorchester, just like Orchard Park, and that causes the citizens, like the ones behind me, to just uproar, angry, they're just mad about it. So, these things can happen once the zoning gets changed, so I'm urging you all to deny this zoning change, as our county is inundated with high-density developments, they are negatively impacting our local housing market, future development opportunities, the businesses that we're all trying to get here to make our town better, our public works, our school system can't handle it. We have the opportunity right now to meet the real housing needs of our community, and I would love, again, to have the developers come back, revise their plans, stick to the one house per one acre, build a ranch, build four bedrooms, build a yard, and truly meet the housing needs of our community, because this, this plan is not it. The citizens of Newton have got to be heard when determining the org, the, you know, what our county is going to turn out to be, it's up to the citizens, it's not up to the developers, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Good evening, Kim Shu, sixty Quail Valley, Social Circle, Newton Side.
Good evening.
Many, much of what I wanted to say, she mentioned, but I wanted to add a few things to this, they mentioned the site plan having the recreational area, but that's in a floodplain, and I think they got real creative on how they're going to manage that floodplain, but let's be honest, the floodplain is a floodplain, you can't develop that, so when you have that and you're going to put trails and whatnot on it, who's going to support that? It's actually end up going to be the taxpayers, even though I think in the last meeting, they said there's going to be a homeowners association for that, we know how those things go, something's going to happen, and that's going to be a burden to the taxpayer. We mentioned traffic earlier, on the slide that was presented, what you didn't see or wasn't commented on to the far-right side, there are over five thousand cars per day in that area, you can break it down by AM, PM, school zone, whatever, but it's five thousand cars in that area that day, that's going to cause problems with our road, it's going to cause problems with our safety, because right now, that corridor might as well be the autobahn, because it is just a traffic nightmare as far as that is concerned. One thing I had mentioned earlier to the planning and zoning committee, and I mentioned this because I follow Commissioner Sanders' Facebook page, and she had actually interviewed several people in the community of, what do you want to see here? They didn't want to see townhomes, they didn't want to see, you know, apartments, they want to see higher-end restaurants, they want to see higher-end shopping, they want to keep their money here, because right now, everybody leaves to go somewhere else, so how do you do that? You have to have a balance in housing, we have four thousand apartments and townhomes coming out of the ground right now in this area, we don't have single-family detached homes coming in this area. He mentioned single-family, but he failed to mention they are attached, single-family, which means townhome, which some, if you want to play with the nomenclature a little bit, a fancy name for a bigger apartment. So, what you need here is to build the community that can balance both sides of that coin. So, with that, I will mention, because everybody keeps mentioning the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan, I went to all of those meetings, and there were a lot of people that were in direct opposition to these nodes and these zones that are in this comprehensive plan. I would say the comprehensive plan is a snapshot in time, that at that particular moment may be great for this area, but things change, people's wants change, people's needs change, and there has to be the ability to deviate from a comprehensive plan to match what is needed in the community, so I would implore that you deny this request based on that.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Please state your name and your address for the record, please, you have a minute and fifty seconds.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Sarah Wages, and I live at sixty Eastwood Circle. I'm here as a mom to young children, to speak to you about families and the part that they play. It is well-known that the citizens want a community that is safe and peaceful. I believe the heart of a community is the family. Covington should want young families to be a priority when making decisions like this. I am here tonight with two other mothers of young children, and we all moved here for a rural, quiet, and safe place to raise our families. I have talked to several other young families who, like us, have moved away or want to move away from places that have developed exactly the way these proposals describe. There are plenty of options in Covington for people who enjoy a way of living that is confined and busy. Young families want land to care for and take pride in. We want to raise our kids in the safety of big backyards with trees, not overcrowded lots, next to another CVS pharmacy, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Please state your name and your address for the record, please, you have forty seconds remaining, forty seconds remaining.
Carolyn Woodward, you've heard of me before, the same reasons that we denied the other one, we need to deny this one, let's take a look at groundwater, let's take a look at the flooding on those trails, let's take a look at all those cars and the density, what would happen if there was a fire in these dense communities and we don't have the emergency resources to take care of them? How long has it currently taken you to receive nine-one-one assistance? I live in District Three, and when anybody from my address calls nine-one-one, I get booted over to Conyers, and I hope to God, if I ever have to call myself, I have enough wit about me to say, and by the way, I'm in Newton County, okay? So, this is ridiculous, and it's just another greedy grab, and I'm sorry, I don't support it for the same reasons we denied the last one, so I respectfully ask that we deny this again.
Thank you so much. We're going to revert back, that portion of our public comments of, we're going to revert back to the applicant, I think the applicant has four minutes and, I think, fifty, fifty-six seconds.
Do you have the clicker? Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you again, members of the board. I want to go through some, some marketing data that we've been able to pull, go back The, during the last twelve months, in Newton County, we've had nine hundred and eighty-two housing closings, of that, ninety-one percent of all those houses that sold were priced under five hundred thousand dollars. So, I think that, that that calls into question that everybody wants large lots. Right now, we have three hundred and thirty-two active listings in Newton County, and of those, seventy-three percent are on lots smaller than one acre. Again, people, not everyone wants a large house on a large lot. The, and with that, I'm going to turn this back over to Ken for a few responses he has.
So, the lock-and-go concept, low-maintenance yard, i- it's what we're doing, we do have the sewer solution, I wanted to make sure everybody understand that, we're removing We're removing the school's pump station. We found a way to bring gravity down, uh, two-seventy-eight, cross Alcovee, tie in, uh, to the system. And that's part of the agreement between county and city. Uh, we're abiding to all conditions. We're willing to restraint, restrict rental restrictions on it. The trails will be the HOA and they will be the same surface, the gravel surface that this, uh, park department use. We're on the four lane with the traffic light. And then just to be totally clear, we are fine with removing townhomes and being stipulated to do only single-family detached at the lot sizes that we show because that's what we believe the market wants.
The, um, as the, um, the representative for the zoning before us pointed out, the current zoning of AR, uh, is an effect, an unconstitutional taking in that it deprives the owners, uh, for the, um, of the, for an economically viable option to develop their property. I would also point out that the developers in this case may have an Atlanta address, but the owners have owned this property since nineteen forty-six.
Sir. We're going to, we're going to ask you not to do that again. If so, she's going to have to leave. Please respect, listen, guys, whether you like the project, whether you hate the project, please respect the people that's up here talking. Um, y'all done really well so far. Let's, 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 let's finish it up. We've got two minutes and four seconds left. Go ahead, sir.
The, um, so we would, we would ask that you follow through on what this board did when they passed the comprehensive land use plan, um, a, a year ago. Uh, when they approved our Flume Amendment, um, in, uh, November of, uh, two thousand twenty-three, eight, nine months ago. We, um, we asked that you zone our property to accord PRC. Um, we feel we have a, a good development plan that it does present, uh, options for, uh, homeowners who cannot afford to live in Rivacove. Um, and there are a lot of people out there entering our market who can't. And remember, um, we, we approved Newton County joining with three other counties to develop Stanton Springs so that we could bring, uh, high-tech industry into this county and create thousands of good-paying jobs for Newton's citizens. With that comes a need to provide housing options, shopping options, and amenities for the people who are going to work in those plants. So we would ask you again to approve our zoning, uh, application and, um, the, um, we would thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Applewhite, if you would, please come on back up. Again, this is in District Five. Commissioner Cowan, what says D? Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, as I said, it's very difficult to be a commissioner sometimes when, um, you're presented with something like this. Uh, I see both sides very much, but I am, uh, elected by the majority of the people in District Five and I have to do what they expect of their representatives. So I'm going to recommend a, um, denial of this zoning.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Is there a second, please? It's a motion by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recuse myself, uh, because, um, uh, even though I'm not the CEO, uh, CEO of Nutzheim Community Services, Mr. Buddy have given money over, uh, well, not money, but biosticks and stuff over the years to the nonprofit. So I want to recuse myself for, uh, for not giving an appearance. Uh, maybe I was doing something wrong because we know we live in these bad political times and I don't want to be tied up in that mess.
Um, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I did have one question I wanted to ask, um, the applicant, if I may. Um, I know they had mentioned in their presentation, um, I know within our community, parks and recreation is very, very important and very vital. Uh, and I know that this board is doing their best to be able to ensure that parks and recreation, uh, is a part of, uh, what we're doing all across the county. Um, so I did have a question, uh, if they can. Uh, please explain the parks and recreation that you had. I think I heard a resident say that this was in a floodplain. So I just wanted to provide some clarity to that if that was the case.
Sure. So kind of on the screen, uh, if you can see that one with the, the loop trail. And so a portion on that left side of it, and so there's the hundred and the five-hundred-year flood from Alcovee. Now, it's, it's very rare. Um, it's two thousand nine, uh, when it came up that, you know, that far. Uh, and so, but what we plan to do is for the retail that we have, uh, we have extra parking, uh, for a civic space. And so you would go into the back of the retail, um, on the, at the traffic light, you would park and there'll be a trail sign, uh, that gives you a map. And you would walk on a, it would be a gravel trail through that area, just like if you were, um, you know, kind of ported, there's a lot of places you guys have, you know, different trails through, you know, flood areas. They're not, they're not wetlands. They're just, you know, if it was a, a hundred-year flood event, it, it would go wet. And that's why you do it out of gravel instead of mulch and so it can be maintained, uh, for the long run. But the trail would run all the way up and then it would loop, uh, through a gate all the way through the actual community, too. Um, and then that's all out of, outside of the flood as well. But the portion of the trail, uh, would be in the floodplain, but it's not, it's not a large occurrence. It's only on major, major storms that that would even get, uh, wet and inundated like that. But it's not a swamp and it's not a wetland.
Thank you for the clarity and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Um, Commissioner Sanders, I got you next.
Yes. Thank you so much. I didn't say anything the first time because I know we were going through this twice. But one of the things that I'm, I'm looking at is that I keep hearing under six hundred thousand dollars, uh, five hundred thousand dollars. And in this day and age, that is not affordable to anybody, especially teachers. We keep saying we want to attract a certain individual, but we're not attracting the essential workers. We're not attracting the teacher. I'm hearing a lot of our teachers who have left Newton County because the, the cost of living is, is high and they're paid low. And they're going to other counties and they're teaching other counties. We're at a teacher shortage. Also, we're at a teacher shortage and we also have capacity with our kids, especially on the western side of Newton County. While I was at the National Association of Counties Convention, I came back today. I had a, the opportunity to attend a housing workshop that also talked about regulation, property, as well as the Flume, which is great that all commissioners need to attend this conference. And guess who's at the highest for the amount of homes being built? And that investors are buying these homes, which is why your property taxes are high now. Guess who's at the highest? The state of Georgia at thirty-three percent out of all of the states in the United States of America. While I was also a- at NACO, I received a text message from some of my constituents who, there was a actual news article that Henry County is about to increase their impact fees from thirty-five hundred dollars. We're the lowest. We're at seventeen hundred, although we are working on that. I'm not saying we're not. We're working on that. And it takes time because it has to be announced and it takes, probably take almost a year. Am I correct, almost a year for that to even be changed? We're at seventeen hundred dollars per house to be built. While you have, DeKalb County is at thirty-five hundred. You have Fulton County is six thousand per house. Henry County is thirty-five hundred dollars per house. It's about to increase theirs and we in Newton County are at seventeen hundred dollars per house. That's why we're attractive. So those are the things that we need to definitely work on. I do, I do congratulate District Five because you all have gotten together. You had a plan. You, you came as a community. I believe in community involvement. I believe in community engagement. So I want to thank you for coming out. Also, just to speak on, DeKalb County has a actual team of residents that are put together. I think it's four per district. Before it even goes to planning and zoning, those developers have to go through those citizens first. I believe we need to implement that here in Newton County. And so those are the things that I see that we are missing that needs to be done. And that's why I love going to these conferences and getting training and hear from other commissioners that are doing it right. Thank you.
Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So first of all, comprehensive plan, um, the comprehen- I, I've heard that ad nauseam tonight. So the comprehensive plan does not mean we automatically flip all the zoning in the county to whatever the comprehensive plan, plan may reflect. Um, that's a future roadmap. And while I'm on the subject, um, in our comprehensive plan, there were two gold stars on these two properties we've talked about tonight. And I'm, I'm, I don't know how those gold stars got there. I don't know how these got designated as courts, but I will find out. Um, I still haven't quite figured that out now in the, in the, in the, i- i- in the, in the, in a note of transparency, I voted for that comprehensive plan. So I gotta, I have to own that. Uh, but that comprehensive plan does not mean that we instantly flip every zoning in the county to match the comprehensive plan, uh, the Flume either. What's the purpose in having, uh, this meeting tonight if we're going to flip those automatically? So, uh, my second point is, um, you know, we, we've got a development like this down in the Mount Pleasant overlay and not one shovel of dirt has been turned. Not one shovel. Uh, so I question the demand. And thirdly, um, I don't, Shayna, take me back to the slide where we discussed sewer. You know, in this presentation, I didn't see one word of sewer. Um, I know you talked about it. But I want to know specifically what the sewer solution is right here. Are we, does this development plan on taking the sewer up, up two-seventy-eight across the river and meeting the, the sewer on that side, on the Covington side of the river? Is that what we're talking about doing?
Shayna, is that, is that a question? You can answer or I need to bring.
Um, I think the developer may better answer it, um.
The applicant may be, I mean, Mr. Phil may be able to, or the, or the council may be able to answer. I don't know.
So the, let me, let me pull it back to, let me find a map. Oh, wait, this is your, sorry. Okay. So from here, uh, what you're not seeing across the street on the south is, is the school. And, and so it's on a pump station. It's on a Newton County pump station currently. And you have the Alcovee on our west. And so the city of Covington is under construction on the line coming down on the western side of the city of, of Alcovee. And so there's an, a, an agreement, agreement you guys have with the city to take off that pumps, that pump station and bring gravity eventually. Now, we're taking the eventually and doing it as part of this project. And so we're required to get that pump station, bring it all the way down two-seventy-eight. And we found a route to cross the Alcovee and tie into that line. And that's been confirmed with Kevin Sorrow and the city. And so that would provide gravity for our development and also gravity for the school so there would be no more pump station. And that's part of the, I think he called it the intergovernmental agreement.
I- i- if that's true, um, so what is the timeline on that? What, what, what's the estimated completion date on that build-out? That infrastructure build-out?
So for, sir, for where we're tying in, we estimated about two years and that was sufficient when we were talking to Kevin for the line for where they are coming down there. Now, as far as extending it, all the plans you guys and, and Covington have for expanding it out, it is very much long-range. But for, for us, uh, we are able to reach that within the, you know, the timeframe of our project.
And, and just for the record, that's two years, correct?
Yeah, our, in order, you know, if we started, let's just say if they were approved for the all-detached, uh, commercial plan, then if we started, by the time we, you know, constructed, platted, it's about two years before our first house flushes.
So, and, and thank you. So, so lastly, if, if we have a, if there's a buyer lined up for this property, how, what, Shayna, what, what obligation are they under to, what, at, what, what are their minimum, what are the minimum standards? What are the minimums they have to meet? I know the zoning.
Yeah.
Um, but what's proposed so far? What, what are the, what would have, they have to adhere to in these proposals?
Um, it depends on how the board approves it. Um, if you're approving what the developer is proposing, then they are doing their minimum lot sizes there for single families. They're doing five thousand square feet. Whereas the court recommends it to be at an acre or, um, half an acre if they're doing conservation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Sanders.
Shayna, I just wanted to answer this question for me because I know we had this issue in District Three when development came before us to build homes. And they said they were building homes. And now they're being leased to purchase and rentals. Is it correct that we do not have anything in place to stop a developer once they have come before us to say they're building houses to turn it into rental properties?
At this time, we do not.
All in favor? Yeah, there's a motion on the floor. All in favor to deny? It passed four oh. Thank you. One recusing. Ms. Applewhite.
Yes, Chairman.
Guys, we're going to ask you, if you're going to leave, please do it quietly. We are still in a board meeting. We're still in a board meeting. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Yep.
Okay, Chairman. Our next petition this evening.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Guys, we're going to ask you again, uh, please, if you're going to leave, please do it quietly. We're still in a board meeting tonight. Again, thank you for being here tonight.
Our next petition this evening is, is a overlay tier change, OTC twenty-four dash zero 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 two. These are two lots that are adjacent to each other. So it's twelve seven ten and twelve seven twenty Brown Bridge Road. And we have the road frontage shown there approximately for each parcel. The existing land use map is a development node. Current zoning is our three single-family residential. The existing overlay tier is a Salem overlay tier one. And the proposed overlay tier is a Salem overlay tier three. The parcel sizes are point six seven acres. And that's for the twelve seven ten Brown Bridge Road and one point zero eight acres. Um, for the, the other one is just Brown Bridge Road. Tax ID numbers are thirteen dash nine zero eight and thirteen dash nine zero. Watershed is the Yellow River. These are located in Commissioner District Two. Current owners are the Dreammakers Youth Foundation, Inc. And our petitioner today is John Nix. And history on seven one, the planning commission recommended approval for this overlay tier change. The applicant's intent is to change the tier for both properties to the Salem overlay tier three to allow for the expansion of the existing daycare into both buildings. And the subject site, um, it's approximately point six seven acres and one point zero eight acres respectively, located on Brown Bridge Road near the intersection with Woodland Road. And they are both in the Salem overlay district tier one, which is a residential district. Both properties are zoned R-three, single-family residential, and the future land use map showed them as development nodes. The properties currently have, uh, one has an unoccupied home at, uh, number twelve seven twenty. And there's an existing daycare in the adjacent parcel at twelve seven ten. And the owner is hoping to incorporate both buildings to expand the daycare services. And the properties are in proximity to commercial, residential, and mobile home park zonings. These are located in the established suburban character area, the suburban core, character area. And of course, the appropriate, appropriate land uses are development node, which is what they currently have right now. And an appropriate zoning would be office institutional, which is what they're looking to go to for the daycare. So the conclusion to the findings. So, the conclusion to the findings. Should this petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners? It should be approved for an overlay tier change conditional, subject to the owner's agreement, to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. And our recommended conditions, if the petition, already, I already, so A, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards for the daycare. One, to rezone the property to appropriate zoning for daycare. Two, a business license must be obtained and maintained from the county. Three, obtain all state licenses and registrations. Four, the office hours will be from Monday to Friday, six AM to six PM. Five, the play areas must be appropriately fenced in. Six, the pool area must be fenced off when lot twelve seven twenty is incorporated into the expansion. And I believe since we have brought this petition before, I believe they have already demolished that pool. Seven, prior to any permits being issued, all plans shall be approved by Development Services Transportation Engineer, the Fire Marshal. And approvals must also be obtained from all external agencies such as the Water Authority, Environmental Health, GDOT, and the Georgia Soil and Water as needed. So, this is the location of the daycare. This is your Walmart here, just to give you some orientation on Brown Bridge. So, the current daycare is located in the rear right now. It is a full-blown commercial daycare, they've been there for several years. It is considered a legal non-conforming use, because the property is still zoned as residential. The owner is hoping to expand it into the building in front, and I think I have a close-up. So, they're looking to expand it into this building here. So, because it's a legal non-conforming use, they are not allowed to expand the use unless they bring the property up to code. And this is, this is what they're doing. The first thing would be to change the tier to a compatible tier that would support a non-residential use. The current tier one is just a residential use. They have to change it to a non-residential tier, which would be the tier three. And that, and once, if that is approved, then they will come back before this board for a rezoning. We would recommend like an O.I. zoning since it's a school. And that would allow them to, if that is approved, that would allow them to expand. So, here you have the zoning, residential zoning. And again, you have a lot of commercial on this side here, and your mobile home park here. And the yellow, those are residential zonings. The tier, this is what we're here for today. So, they're currently in the green tier, which is a residential tier. They're looking to go to the town center, which is very, which is adjacent to it, so it would be contiguous. So, once, if they are approved to amend it to this tier here, then they can move forward with rezoning it to a non-residential zoning. And only then will they be able to expand the daycare and the services that they offer. As you can see, it is in a development node, and this entire junction at Brown Bridge and Salem Road is a development node, which is a future land use map. We are in District Two. This is the survey that they've proposed. Currently, they're located in the rear, they have the long driveway. And they wanted to incorporate, you know, this building in front here. So, this entire, they have to combine the lots, of course, and then that would be the daycare. So, this is the house in front that we were seeing from Brown Bridge Road, and of course, this is the daycare in the rear. And if there are any questions for staff?
Thank you. Thank you, we're gonna open it up now, it's nine eleven. We're gonna open it up for the applicant and those that want to speak in favor tonight. You may come at this time, you have ten minutes to do so. Are the applicant and those that want to speak in favor tonight.
Good evening, John Nix, nine four five Bank Street, Conyers, Georgia. And to my left is Nikki Wilson, the founder and owner of this school. The school has been in operation since, not under Nikki, but since nineteen sixty-nine, it's been a daycare center. I'm sorry, nineteen eighty-nine. So, the starred lot in the rear has been a daycare center since nineteen eighty-nine. She began operations there in twenty seventeen and has been operating her school there since that date. She recently acquired the front lot, it was all owned by the same family. In fact, the, the woman that operated the daycare center lived in the house in the front for a number of years. So, we're here as, it's been described to seek a tier amendment, because we've got to have O.I. zoning. We can only get O.I. zoning if we move to the tier to the left, which isn't a tremendous jump. The daycare center has been in operation in this community for over forty years and has not been any kind of a disruptive actor or participant in the community. In fact, we would argue that it supports the surrounding residential in a very important way. I'm gonna let Nikki describe her school operation and then just hit on a couple of zoning points, and then just wait for y'all's questions.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I founded Dreammakers Youth Foundation in two thousand four. And we're a nonprofit organization that works with kids with special needs. One of our strategic plan, part of our strategic plan was to eventually provide daycare services. And we wanted to offer integrated services so that then we'd have kids with special needs interacting and learning from those who are typically developing. And so, we were able to purchase the business in two thousand seventeen. And it was already an operating daycare business. And there was a distressed seller, and we were able to purchase the business. And so, at that point, we were renting. And last year, in two thousand twenty-three, we were able to purchase. And we had to purchase both properties, the house and the building behind. The families was unwilling to separate them. They were stating that there wouldn't be someone who would be really willing to purchase the house with the driveway running alongside and the daycare behind. And so, we purchased it, believing that we would eventually be able to expand our program. And so, we do serve typically development kids and those with special needs. We are pretty much at capacity, and so, we're at the point now where it's time for us to expand. And we're looking forward to it. So, looking forward to a yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Because this is a tier request, I think the most critical thing about the tier analysis, which is different than a zoning analysis, is, does it really make sense as it relates to the existing tier? And you can see, we're immediately adjacent, we're one point seven acres. The property to our right, that's a property that's owned by a gentleman that does not oppose our zoning, our tier request or the rezoning requests that we have pending. And based on her description of what the service is provided and the history of the service that's been provided from this, we're not asking for a drastic change or anything that's gonna be dramatic. She currently serves seventy-nine students out of the daycare center. It's anticipated that the students will grow twenty-one to ninety, because they're really at capacity at the back building. They're gonna renovate the front building and to do the sma- the younger children in, oh, the reverse.
Yeah, we're gonna have the after-school program in the house. And eventually, we'd like to offer Georgia pre-K in the back. So, once we move our after-school kids up front, then we're hoping to transition one of those rooms to Georgia pre-K.
And we've, we've had a traffic count done as a preliminary matter. And when she expands the school, if she gets the twenty-one additional students, which I'm confident she will, you'd only be looking at additional thirty-two trips a day from the site. And we also had an accident study done for the last five years by a traffic engineer. And they determined by looking at the reports in this area that not one accident in the last fifteen, last five years occurred as a result of people coming in and out of the driveway of the school. So, we'd ask your consideration for this first step in our process of getting a tier amendment.
Thanks, sir. And you did say you want to reserve the remainder of your time, right?
I, I hope I don't need it, but yes.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to speak in favor? Anyone else would like to speak in favor? Thank you. We also allow ten minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. You may come at this time, state your name, your address for the record, please. Anyone would like to oppose tonight? Anyone would like to oppose tonight? Thank you. Ms. Appleweight.
I think this is District Two, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I make my motion, first, I want to thank Ms. Wilson for the work that you are doing in our community. I think it is very, very important that we truly take opportunities to educate our children that have special needs, as well as those children that are developing at a younger age. And early development, I believe, is very, very vital, very, very important. I'm also seeing a growing need within our community for after-school programs where our children can get additional help with their curriculum that they're getting in our school systems. And so, I wanted to just take this opportunity to applaud you and to say thank you for the work that you are doing. You're welcome. And so, with that being said, Mr. Chair, I would like to take this opportunity. And I move that we approve OTC two four dash zero 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 two.
Thank, thank you, sir. It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and seconded by Commissioner Anderson. End of discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you so much. Ms. Appleweight.
Thank you, Chairman. Our final petition this evening is a conditional use permit, CUP twenty-four dash zero 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 six. This has, this has two companion cases that have already been heard. It's a variance, VAR twenty-three dash zero 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 one one, and an appeal, APP twenty-three dash zero 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 five. The proposed use is for a kennel for dog boarding and grooming, located at eleven thirty-five Bethany Road. It is on twenty-three point two three acres, tax ID sixteen dash four three A. The future land use map is rural residential, and the current zoning is agricultural residential. It is located in the South River watershed in Commissioner District Two. And the owners are Margaret L. Armstrong and Torin D. Mike. And our petitioner today is Torin D. Mike. And again, applicant's intent is to establish a dog kennel for boarding and grooming for no more than twenty dogs. And we do have the history before us, so in November of two thousand twenty-three, it was heard before the BZA for a variance. So, kennels, they require a five hundred foot setback from their boundary lines. They were able to meet this on only their north and south boundary, but not the east and west. So, the variance before the BZA was to reduce those side setbacks, the side setbacks for the east and the west boundaries. This variance was granted with the conditions as shown above here. And then, the BZA added number seven, which the kennel shall have no more than twelve dogs now or in the future. And they granted it to be four hundred and forty-one feet off of the eastern property line and at least two hundred and sixty-one feet off of the western property line. On three five twenty twenty-four, this case was appealed to the Board of Commissioners, and the board denied that appeal and upheld the BZA's decision to approve the variance for the kennel. And then, on seven one, the planning commission recommended approval for the conditional use permit for this kennel. And if there are any questions, we, I'm more than happy to go over that. The subject site, as we said, is twenty-three point two three acres, zoned AR. It contains a seventeen, one thousand seven hundred and eighteen-heated square foot home and an accessory detached garage or storage building. And again, due to the lot not being wide enough, the applicant was approved for a variance to reduce the east and west boundary setbacks. There is a stream on the southern end of the parcel that feeds a pond located on the property. And the proposed location of the kennel is behind the house, but in front of the pond. And we'll go to the aerial for that in a second. For the site plan analysis, based on what was submitted to staff on March thirteenth of this year. So, the site plan and letter of intent indicates the current kennel area will be at least one thousand eight hundred and thirty-three square feet. So, that's the total size of the kennel area that they're looking at. The applicant provided Development Services with a survey of the property. Kennel will be placed behind the current home, but away from the pond. There is sufficient re-coverage between the kennel and the neighbors. And the kennel will be set back at least seven hundred feet from the road. And of course, the signage has to be in accordance with our county ordinance, particularly section five two five dash zero two zero D. And this is the, in our orders, and I won't read through these, but this is the definition for the kennel in our ordinance, and as well as the requirements per section five ten dash three five five, which describes the kennel as for four or more dogs. And in conclusion, so the BZA approved the variance for the setbacks for the kennel. This decision, even though it was appealed to the BOC, the BOC upheld the BZA's decision. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use request to establish a kennel for boarding and grooming of dogs with staff recommended conditions. So, should this petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners? It should be approved for a cup for a kennel conditional, subject to the owner's agreement, to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards. A, prior to the release of a business license, provide a copy of an approved fire inspection from the Newton County Fire Marshal to Development Services and complete an annual fire inspection from the Newton County Fire Services. B, prior to any construction of the kennel, the applicant must apply for and get approval for all required permits from Development Services. The application must also include a detailed site plan of the project. C, obtain environmental health approval before the issuance of a business license. Two, they must submit and maintain state licenses from the Georgia Department of Agriculture and submit yearly to the Development Services Department upon renewing the business license. Three, any outside activity or exercises must occur within the fenced enclosure, a minimum of five feet in height for the dogs. And it must be at least a hundred feet off of any of the boundary lines on the property. Four, there will be no more than twenty dogs allowed in the kennel. This was as approved by the BZA. And the five, the conditions, the other conditions as set forth by the BZA for VAR twenty-three dash zero 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 one one shall apply. This is the location off of Bethany Road for the property. As you can see, the, it's, the property is long, but it's not very wide, and that's why they had to get the variance. This is just a close-up, so we have the home here. And this is the proposed location of the kennel. And of course, you know, it's away from the pond, and of course, off of the east and west boundary lines. It is zoned agricultural residential. South River is the watershed. It is in Commissioner District Two. This is the survey that was submitted by the applicant. This is just a close-up, and these just show the setbacks that were, you know, approved by the BZA in terms of the location of the kennel, the proposed location. And this is just a close-up of it, you've got the house up here and then the proposed location for the kennel. And these are concepts that were submitted by the applicant, just to give you an idea of what this setup would look like. So, you've got the actual enclosures here for the pups. And then, of course, they've got their little play area at the back there. And I think the applicant would be better able to describe his plan for you. But these are just four different perspectives, you have an aerial here. And this is just another angle, and this is, it's superimposed on their property, just to give you an idea of what it would look like. And this is just a different angle, we have the playpen area, the enclosures for the, for the dogs. This is the pond that we can see. And of course, up here, you have the enclosure for the kennel. This is just yet another angle, I think they've got their little play area out here. And the applicant does have some additional slides they would like to present to you. But if there are any questions for staff, if not, Chairman, this is a public hearing, too.
Thank you, ma'am. It is nine twenty-seven, we're gonna open it up for a public hearing. Comments-wise, the applicant and those that would like to make comments in favor tonight, you may come at this time. Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Oh, good evening, Torin Mike, eleven thirty-five Bethany Road. Okay, so, I guess we don't need to run through the details again, I think a lot of that has been covered very well. And this, again, in the spirit of transparency, I wanted to call out some inconsistencies here. call out some inconsistencies here. Oh, we can go forward. I apologize. Awesome. So this was our original concept design based on what we started, we wanted, or what we thought we wanted to do when we first started on this journey. And by and large, it was well-received. However, there was one concern from a neighbor that maybe there would be noise. And so we were really trying to think through, if there was a noise issue, kind of how we would mitigate that. So as you can see, it's essentially one structure that's subdivided into roughly, in this particular picture, six units. And so we wanted to change that design to better accommodate some of the concerns that were raised. And so that's why we've decided to kind of individualize those units. And the major takeaway here is that, one, you don't have all of the dogs sharing one common space. So the idea is that when you open the door, you know, there's, if there's a bark, it's isolated to, you know, one dog, as opposed to maybe opening one door and then, you know, every dog that you're boarding potentially, you know, getting excited, hey, we're going outside, we're going outside, and then they all kind of, in unison, in chorus, maybe cause a commotion. So we've really tried to focus on individualizing the housing. Also, it's, you know, climate-controlled and insulated, and then just trying to separate them. So not only reducing the potential for collective noise, but then also reducing, I guess, the anxiety amongst the animals, right? They're, you know, they're by themselves, or they're maybe with, you know, a dog that they came with, so they're not really smelling, you know, unknown dogs, or maybe they can't, you know, they can smell them, maybe they can't see them. So we're just really trying to, you know, create an environment for them where they're the most comfortable. And so that was just to primarily address our, you know, that concern that came up with noise. Other than that, there were no major changes that we wanted to, I guess, implement. It was really kind of to address that concern. And then also, one of the residents of Newton County brought something up, so I wanted to be very clear. Each individual housing unit is for one dog. It isn't, because I know the, the, the presentation here says we want twenty animals, so we don't want to give the impression that we have five dogs per house, right? This would be one dog per doggy house, you know. So in, like, at this particular moment, we're looking to implement five of these, and if it goes well, add more. But that's kind of where we stand right now. But I want to make sure it's very clear that we're not trying to have five dogs in each one of these houses. And with that, I'll reserve my time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Thank you, Brian Reserve at seven-oh-two, please. We also allow ten minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. Anyone would like to oppose, you may come at this time. You have ten minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Carolyn Woodward, Broadleaf subdivision, off of Wild Flower Trail. The presenters has indicated that these would be close to a pond. I don't notice the elevation, and I don't know that there's been a watershed analysis done. If that pond full of stale water from dogs, twenty dogs, and the ground runoff with all of that polluted soil gets into that pond, and it runs into the water source, there's a problem. I also don't like that the indication that we have not heard from the neighbors on the other side. Now, whether or not it's currently farmland, it's zoned for property. So how do we know that that property doesn't get sold next week, and the poor homeowner gets stuck with having barking dogs on the, on the, on the border of their property? My third question is, is that five-feet fencing? It's not really a question. It's a statement, is not enough for a dog. I have a sixty-pound shepherd mix right now, and she can jump much more than five feet. So unless you're keeping dogs under, like, twenty pounds, six-feet fencing is not enough unless you put razor wool around the top. Those dogs are going to see squirrels, and they're going to want to jump. The presenter also indicated that the, the separation by what, two feet between each kennel there, is going to stop the dogs from barking? I don't know if y'all have been around dogs before, but when there's no humans around, and a human shows up, they can smell you from a block or two away. So they know it's not mama. They don't know who it is. They don't see who it is, because that, that place is blocked from them, so they're going to bark, because that's what dogs do, okay? So this is not far enough away from each other to keep it from being a noise nuisance, unless you take this and put it directly in the middle of that property, and it's protected on all four sides. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you. That portion of our public, that public hearing is closed. Yeah, he does. The applicant, you may come at this time. Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it starts in the next speak. I apologize. With respect to the watershed, I think that's a, I think that's a fair call-out. What I can say is that based on the terrain that's, that the property, that the property is situated on, is that where that dog kennel is slopes essentially away from our pond, and then we also have a six-foot ditch that kind of girdles our pond. So that's what I can speak to with confidence with respect to water. As it pertains to dogs barking, I think generally speaking, this has been, I think a lot of people have very anecdotal evidence or personal experience with dogs, and so I'm sure any person could come up here and bring a fairly compelling argument as to what causes dogs to bark and what causes dogs not to bark. All I can say based on, you know, my limited years of dog ownership, is that reactivity is based primarily on how that dog is, you know, engaged with, right, and the kind of environment that you put them with. I think generally speaking, boarding situations, the dog is always away from the owner, so we acknowledge that the, the level of anxiety or just difference in their daily routine is just, it's disturbed. So we just have to deal with that essentially. And so I think the best way to deal with that anxiety and then bring it down is, one, to have an environment that's comfortable, that's stimulating, and that isn't one where, and I'm, you know, other dog kennels do it differently. I'm not saying that they're doing something wrong. But if you put them in an environment that's much more controlled, as opposed to one where it's maybe more crowdsourced, the likelihood that the dog can adapt better, again, in my limited experience, we've seen positive results with that. And I think, to the last point with where the, where the kennels are situated, they are essentially situated directly in the center of the property. I think that's, that was a fair call-out, and, you know, to that point, that's where they are. And lastly, you know, to the neighbors, none of whom are within, you know, the typical five-hundred-foot, I guess, setback requirement. For context, the, the neighbor who had a concern was, I think, over eight-hundred feet away, if I'm not mistaken. So the closest neighbors to us haven't raised a concern. And I think the folks who are closest to this dog kennel are us, the owners. So if there's anyone who has a vested interest in making sure that we're maintaining an environment that's low noise, it has to be the people who live less than thirty feet away where these kennels are situated. So again, I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Applewhite, that portion of our public hearing is closed. I think this is District Two Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to say thank you to Mr. Torin Mike for your presentation, and thank you for addressing those citizens' concerns, because they're important, and we want to make sure that we address those as well. I do recall previously that we did have, as you mentioned, there was one owner that did actually make comments, and as you stated, they're over eight-hundred feet away. It also looks like that our Planning Commission has done their due diligence, and they have recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. So with that being said, I move that we approve CUP two-four dash zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-six.
Is there a second? Is there a second? It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason that we approve this, and second by Commissioner Cowan. In the discussion, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Applewhite, so the conditional use permit expires if the applicant sells the property. Is that correct?
Yes, this is good for this particular applicant only. Yes, someone new would have to come back before the board if they wanted to do a kennel as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone, any more discussion? All in favor, it passes five-oh. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Applewhite.
That was the last one. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Next is citizen comments. This is an opportunity we allow citizens to make comments. You have three minutes to do so. If you would, please state your name, your address for the record, please.
This is Carolyn Woodward again, Broadleaf subdivision, District Three. I have written this email to all of you members of the board multiple times. I've sent it to my district, this district commissioner multiple times since February. I have done six requests and have been completely ignored to the point of hearing nothing but crickets. In fact, I was actually blocked and banned from a particular social media site because the person that I was challenging used her authority and her fake accounts to block me. So let me read this for you, okay? Apparently, I said to her, I said, I had asked about the gun shooting that happens in my district up north of me. It borders Rockdale County. All of the map is saturated. I've sent all of you guys copies of it. But yet you've ignored it. And it, it borders Rockdale County, too, with saturated one-acre properties. Just north of my property is a two-acre property, and according to the county ordinance, it allows gunfire on a two-acre property. Now, a single twenty-two bullet can go a mile, two and a half miles. A one acre of a property is less than sixty, less than a quarter of a mile. Does that make sense? This property was doing rapid gunfire in February, to the point where they had multiple people there shooting small and large caliber weapons. How do I know this? Because I fire them, too, but I fire them at approved firing range and not in the middle of neighborhoods. The county resources in Rockdale and, and Newton were called multiple times, and they sent officers out there, only to be turned away. Anybody that shows up on somebody's property that where they're firing weapons, you think they're going to say, yes, officer, I was firing, or are they going to give it to grandma who's not drinking? I want this ordinance changed. I have open items about handicap accessibility that I've been complaining about since I've been coming here for six years, and yet it's still ignored. I implore you, and I warn you, because I'm this close to filing a complaint against the ADA, you are out of compliance. Move these meetings to an accessible arena. I shouldn't be allowed to have to beg on the steps for some officer to come out and then bring me up like I'm a, I'm an armed prisoner when everybody else can enter through the front steps. I represent the amputee community. First of all, I, I represent God himself, and secondly, the amputee community and all of the underdogs. So you guys sit back here, and you ignore us. We come up here time after time, and you do nothing but ignore us. So I want those items. I want that one on the agenda. I want you to scrape up that email and look at the map. And next time I come here, I want it added to the agenda. Does that make sense? And don't tell me you didn't get my six emails. Do better. Do better now.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Good evening. Maya, February quarter, District Three. I really was just amazed that all of the red shirts present tonight garnered denial of two developments within District Five, and we can't seem to do the same for District Three. Maybe we need to wear blue shirts. I don't know. But the same type of development was approved in front of Newton County High School. And the same reasons for denial should remain the same. They were brought up by the community. We were misrepresented by the development. When we had our last meeting with them, they showed us a map where development was on one side. But when we came into planning and zoning and appeal, there was development on both sides. So I just think that, I don't know if it can be reversed, but I know for sure there needs to be a moratorium in Newton County, period. And it's been asked for. I don't know how it gets on the agenda, but it needs to happen sooner than later.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, we almost, we, we really close to having a good board meeting. Yeah, don't wreck it. Go ahead, ma'am. You have, state your name, your address for the record, please.
Greetings, commissioners. My name is Tercia Hodge. I'm a Newton County resident for fifteen years. I am here to talk about that development that will be in place next year, twenty-twenty-five. That is our biggest fear. Two-hundred-and-sixteen apartment-style roommate in front of Newton County High School. Back in April, I sent a letter on behalf of my HOA president to everybody on this board, saying, we don't want it. We feel as if we were blindsided from the tiny initial posting of notifying adjoining property owners and the confusion during the zoning approvals because all the boxes was checked. Our zoning laws and ordinance need to be updated to current conditions. I'm going to refer to a Facebook post during the hotly contested political season, and the quote stated, "Look at the current zoning ordinances on Ag Silver Ridge Farms residence and current District Four, formerly District Three residence across from Newton High School, where they're about to get a strong dose of reality." Well, that reality is coming. Our commissioner, thank you, Commissioner Sanders, filed the appeal of the approval on our behalf through the PZA. Within ten days of that decision, I attempted to file an appeal to the BOC. However, Shayna informed me that because Commissioner Sanders is a sitting commissioner, it went to the PZA and not the BOC. So here I am, talking to you guys about this. Where is it written that a taxpayer cannot appeal to the BOC on a decision of their planning and zoning? I get it, zoning, preliminary prep application, whatever. I'm still learning, but I need clarification. Furthermore, it was suggested that I take this matter to the Superior Court. Had Commissioner Sanders been informed of this precarious decision to appeal on our behalf, I certainly doubt that she would appeal. We would. I would like for you guys to envision this development, separated by an iron gate in front of a high school. How'd that look to you guys? Like a prison to me. Now, imagine if it was in front of East Side High School in District Five. My sister lives in District Five. As pretty as my house is in District Three, she told me flat out she hate coming over there. She hate that intersection by Coral Road and Harold Dobbs, that stop sign.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else?
Marie Millian from Neely Manor. So just to expound on what she just was talking about with that apartment complex. That evening of the planning and zoning appeal, I was here. And when I arrived home, what did I come to find? One of the homes in our neighborhood had been shot up. The first two bullets went to that homeowner's daughter's bedroom. And this is what this building, that no one's thinking about police and schools, is going to bring to us. And I'm the, I'm the vice president of our HOA, so I was getting calls back and forth, people paranoid, even till this day. It's been a couple of weeks now. People are scared. I mean, I see homeowners adding more cameras to their houses. Any car that passes by, people are freaked out. They're texting me. Something has to be done. A moratorium needs to be put in place. We need to get building under control. We need to involve the police department, the sheriff's department, in this planning. We need to involve the schools. We need a community center, like that West Side you mentioned after school tonight. We need that for our students. This is part of the problem. They're walking, my sister in her subdivision on West Bridge in District Four, last night there were three young men dropped off in the neighborhood, going around checking doors and cars. This is what's coming to District Three, District Four. We need a slowdown. We need just, everybody to stop thinking about just the finances and think about the people and actual, like, lives, because my neighbors are panicked. They may not be here because they don't know how to come and express themselves, but trust me, they're in my text messages all the time worried about what's happening. And they have me calling the sheriff's department, and I'm like, guys, you have to also come and speak for yourselves. But since they're not coming to speak for themselves, I'm here to speak for them. Because let me tell you something, to have bullets come flying through your daughter's bedroom while she's sitting there with a friend, that's terrifying. I don't know how they deal with even living in the house still, because one of the bullets went through their window, it went through a chair in their kitchen, and it went out the garage door. And our homes are on less- And our homes are on less than quarter acre lots. So that's terrifying. That's all I wanted to share.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Please state your name and your address for the record.
Kim Young, Crow Road. I've got three just kind of requests. One is when you all are putting, and I think I've already mentioned this, when you're doing the public notices, use a broad Sharpie and not a medium because as you drive by, you can't read the dates. The second thing is with these developers, I don't know who did the road on the bypass. I don't know who's in charge of that road. But the new development that's going in across from Middle Ridge, I don't know if you've driven it. If you're coming from Flat Shoals going towards Porter Dale, there's going to be a wreck. I'm sorry. It's so uneven. They did a very poor job and if this is any indication of what developers are doing, we don't need them building things in our community. And the third thing is on these traffic counts, I would like to know how they do them. Because I know the two that were up here tonight were totally different and you're the same area. You know, I looked at the one when they did the Crow Road because I live on Crow Road and the amount of cars, you know, I can sit in my driveway and I can count more than they did in two hours. So how do they do them? You know, there's been, I know they used to have the little strips across the road. When the Crow Road one came up, they gave, there's been no strips across Crow Road. You know, I go up and down. I want to know, how do they count the cars? That's my other question because I think a lot of that is false.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Missy Laura. I live at 160 Stewart Hollow Lane. I noticed coming in tonight, there was a sign that did not allow water and drinks anymore coming into this building, but each and every one of you have one sitting in front of you beside equipment that our taxpayers pay for and that is not the same thing and the hard benches that we sit on that can't be ruined. If it's one for one, it is one for all. The $100,000 presidential for mental health that was approved with no job description asked what the position was for after he was given that, after he was denied the $100,000 that he thought he still had and the general fund and that money had to be moved for that position. Namy lady came and spoke the last meeting of April before May, before Mental Health Month, wanted that position. I talked with her after that meeting. She had no idea that position was even passed. There's absolutely no communication between them. You just passed $89,715 to the Parks and Recreation Department for any Tom sports that's found on Facebook that's currently non-compliant as of June 14th of 2024 by Auntie Champion with two addresses listed in McDonough. What are you going to do with that $90,000 you just gave away now? Zoning and school issues. I went to the capital improvement meeting and listened to Dr. Barr speak and the new superintendent. There's absolutely no schools being planned to be built in this school before 2030 at all. That plan takes four to five years to do. If they plan on building any more schools in this county, it will not be until they begin on the new program in two years. The one that we just voted on goes between 2025 to 2029. If it is passed for new schools in the next east blosst, how long does it take to build a school? One to two years? You're not going to see a new school in this county until 2031 or 2032. Now tell me how you're going to support these kids in these schools now. I don't see it happening. The one that you denied for Morgan Farms, I appreciate you. Morgan Farm Inline Communities LLC is not listed on the state website as a business.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Hi, sorry, I know this meeting is getting long, but my name is Brian Fricks. Live at 130 Cornice Trace Drive, Kevin, Georgia. Wanted to thank you tonight for pausing those developments that were really large, really seemed outside the scope. And actually, when Mr. Johnson got up here sharing, I think some of his details, you're speaking to homes, Commissioner Saunders about homes under 500,000. 91% in the county are sold under 500,000. So there's currently almost 300 homes available under 500,000. There's 17 homes between 500 and 600 and 27 homes over 600. So you know, he was trying to say there's a demand. It seems like that is kind of where it's at. And also that 70% of the lots that are built are currently smaller than one acre. So the small density is there. And that's kind of what he was pushing, so I didn't really understand why he was going after that. And Porter Dale has put a moratorium on their building because they're overdeveloped. They realize they don't have plans to move forward. I think the county should definitely look at adopting something like that. I don't know where the commission sits, but I hear you guys. I mean, we need to pause. Impact fees are a great way to kind of slow growth, kind of move it in a direction I think the county wants to move. So definitely things like that need to be looked at sooner rather than later so we can have good growth. It's good to hear daycares. I mean, that's a part of, you want young families moving into the neighborhood. That's definitely one of the services you've got to be able to bring in. So thank you guys tonight. And then the one complaint that I have, I need District Five, Lake Varner Park, it's become a hangout. There's a lot of late night traffic over there. There's burnouts in the park at night. I live close there. I can hear the burnouts, fireworks, a lot of after dark. I'm talking like 10 o'clock or so. That definitely needs to be something that we look at, the parks. You know, do a dawn to dusk, something like that to kind of make sure we keep control and keep these places safe for families. And to end, I'd just like to say thank you guys. It was a lot of people here tonight, but I thought the commission did really good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for keeping order.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Good evening. Tiffany Benton, District Three. I'm here to express the sentiments that Commissioner Edwards expressed earlier. Infrastructure is years away. Infrastructure, the growth in District Three has not been consistent with the current infrastructure we have in place. We need you all to be as concerned about the infrastructure and the capacity in District Three as you are of infrastructure and capacity in District Five. We want to just echo the sentiments I've heard. We would like to have a building moratorium until we can figure out smart growth. We want to figure out the whole Almond overlay situation. It just opens up the floodgates for any and everything to come into District Three without, and it's outpacing the capacity for us to even drive the roads with peace. We sitting in traffic for hours. School is getting ready to start back. Buses are going to be running. And what affects District Three Almond Road affects everybody who travels to I-20 on Almond Road. So we would like to see a building moratorium and we're in desperate need of a overhaul of the Almond overlay. And I'm not sure what all that entails, but a one Newton has to include West Newton and we are in our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Anyone else? Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you so much and thank you residents for listening because I mentioned the moratorium in a public meeting, the last board of commissioners meeting. One of the things that I'm excited about is that, as I stated, going to the National Association of Counties and learning. And I will post this actually on my page because they're also digital. They have toolkits on regulation code, fees, land use and infrastructure. I will post those online. I have the physical copy, but they also have the digital copy. So where residents can become more acclimated and know the terms. Because one of the main things is that we don't know the terminology. I had to learn myself as well because zoning was not my thing. So when I got in this position, that was something I had to learn instead of I wanted to know what it was all about. So I will make sure I post that online as well. In reference to the constituents that came up in regards to ignoring on social media, unfortunately, I was sent threats in my inbox and my picture was blackened out by you. So unfortunately, I'm not going to respond to anyone that's threatening me online in my inbox.
Guys, listen.
So going back and moving forward.
Hold on, Commissioner. Guys, we're not, this is not an open, this is not open dialogue. Finish it up. Guys, we're not, listen, we're not going to do that. We're not going to do that.
Thank you.
Commissioner, go ahead.
Also, just want to inform that I partnered with the Department of Community Affairs, DCA, which I mentioned in the last meeting on August 24th. They will be bringing the Georgia Dream Program to Newton County at 11 o'clock. And we will have that, I will have that also posted. And we're going to have the fourth annual women's retreat, which will be September 28th. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Cowan. Anything, thank you. Commissioner Henderson.
Well, one of the first things, Tim came up and was talking about Lake Varner, about it's just a hangout spot and where we believe teenagers, but it could be younger adults hang out and do stuff out there. And we've got these parks and we've seen like we don't, we need somebody to patrol them and do their dusting. I think they're so all everywhere. Nelson Heights is also included in it too as well. I live about a lot from it. And it used to be it would close at dusk and then they play all night long, even shine car lights out there, even some prostitution. Then you go out and if you want to go out to the pavilion, you'll see it's so filthy. I never seen a counter facility that's that filthy. It still got red mud from when it was built on it and it shouldn't be. I mean, it should be just as clean as the rest of them and it should be patrolled. People come and say, well, you know, I want to rent it. I said, call Jack in. People come and say, I want to have something in the park. I said, call Jack in. You know, so I think if you have a facility that the people are used to coming to and kind of engaging and true to have after-school activities and there is no longer available, I think that's really a disservice to the community when you had promised them. They're more than what they have received. And then some of the food and some of the tourists, my grandkids occasionally, they would go up there. One time said, Granddaddy, I can't eat that stuff. And then it would close two, three weeks before school end. So for the kids that might be hungry, they're still not being fed. And your way may you think is a better way, but I don't think it is. I think it's somewhat a worse way because the police patrol up there, they stay at all times, city code and PD. There's always some kind of activity going on out there around that particular building now. I would ask the board of commissioners to open it back up for the public, for the people and stop closing it down. And we got a long way to go, a long way to go. And I think one of the best things we can start doing at this part is transparency. Just make sure that if there's going to be a grand opening, it's bringing your park. Don't you think you want to let the district commission know the date and time? I had to learn from Commissioner Cowan and put the date, I mean, the time, the date. But let's, let people know what's going on, even their old commissioner. I sure would appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Mason. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a few announcements. One, on this coming Friday, the 19th, we'll be having our District Two back-to-school movie in the park at Denny Dobbs Park. So just come out with your lawn chairs. We just want to, our kids are getting ready to go back to school and so we just want to take this opportunity to have another free community event where we can watch movies, have food, fellowship and good fun with each other. So that'll be this Friday, July the 19th at Denny Dobbs Park. Also, I was honored to go to the NACO conference, the National Association of Counties this past week and was reappointed as one of the vice chairs of the Community Economic and Workforce Development Steering Committee. So I'm excited to serve 2025.
Hold on, sir. Guys, I'm going to ask you all again, the last time, please. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
No problem. Excited to be able to serve in that capacity again, to really be able to look at things that are relative to really enhancing our community, looking at our economic development as well as our workforce and how we can improve in those particular areas. And then lastly, I am still currently working on the NACO stepping up initiative, which is a mental health initiative. So we're currently looking for those stakeholders throughout the community where we can actually begin to come together, meet, have the discussions about how we can address mental health. I was able to meet some individuals at the NACO conference that is also going to be willing to help partner with us to truly make that initiative great where we can address mental health in our community. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Edwards. Thank you. Guys, I want to thank the citizens tonight for having a great meeting. There's a lot of citizens here and they were very respectful both ways. So I want to thank that and thank the commissioners for being respectful tonight as well. I thought it was an excellent meeting. With that said, we do not have a need for executive session. I seek a motion that we adjourn, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and then second by, can I get second by Commissioner Mason? All in favor? All in favor? Oh, thank you. We stand adjourned.